Go ahead and get the meeting started. We don't normally do this, but I'm going to go ahead and ask for a pledge of allegiance, and then Renee is going to do an invocation for us this morning. So, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice overall.
Heavenly Father, we are just excited on this morning. You have shown yourself to be faithful. You have allowed us to be witnesses to your healing mercy and your power by restoring Commissioner Chris Latvala. Those of us that prayed for him, his wife, and his family, we prayed in faith. We prayed knowing that you are the author and finisher. We prayed knowing that you are the ultimate doctor. You are the person who has the ultimate say. And we are thankful that he's here. He's walking, he's talking, he has movement of his limbs, he's in his right mind, but more importantly, his heart is full of joy and gratitude. I would like to also pray at this time for Commissioner Peters and what she's going through with her loved ones. We know that you are not absent, but you are forever present, and anything that we ask in your name, you will give it. We ask that you just continue to protect those of us that are here on today, all of the county staff, even the residents that we serve. The month of December is supposed to be a month of joy and a month of gladness, and we know that many, at this point in time, are experiencing some difficulties. But we also know if they just hold on to your faithful hand, that everything will be all right. We ask that you bless this meeting on today. We have very important business to discuss regarding how we move our county forward. But you will show yourself, as you have always done, that we are persons who are looking out for the best attributes of our community and not for ourselves. Again, Lord God, we are thankful and grateful. We can't thank you enough. We can't honor you enough. We can't even begin to pay you for what you have done, what you will do, and what you are doing, in the majestic name of Jesus Christ, the One who loves us and whom we love. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Flowers. I could have prayed for a year trying to come up with that invocation. That was beautiful. Thank you. That was very nice. And again, Chris, I wanted to take the opportunity to welcome you home to us. We are so grateful, as Commissioner Flowers prayed, we are so grateful to have you here and to your family. I know it's been a tough time for you all as well. I can't imagine, Bianca, what you've been through. Just amazing, side by side the whole time, and very tough on you, so take care of yourself too, young lady. And we'll continue praying for your family and for this man as well. So, get strong, brother. We've got a lot of work next year, so. So, again, welcome. All right. We're going to go ahead and get started then with the meeting. First thing on the agenda, St. Pete Clearwater International Airport Parking Garage Update. Sounds like a doozy.
So Mark is on his way up. So Mark gets to provide the first presentation as his role as the interim director. And as you know, they've had a lot of conversations with Allegiant, and we have significant parking issues out there. And so they're going to propose this today, they're going to go through this with you, and then they'll be coming back to you, because you know we put the fees on hold, and they're working on those also that will align with their capital construction program. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Great. Good morning, Vice Chair Commissioners. Again, my name is Mark Spregg. I'm the interim airport director for the St. Pete Clearwater National Airport. I'm here to discuss.
Yeah, speak up, or is that, is that my?
Hello, hello, can, okay.
Oh, there you go.
There we go.
Beautiful.
I'm here to discuss a much-needed parking garage to handle our ever-growing passenger records. So allow me to give you a much, a little history and background before getting into the specifics.
Somewhere in the back, we need some help on the presentation. Up, there we go. Up, back it up. There we go. We're good to go. Thank you.
All right. So in 2019, the airport completed a landslide parking improvement project in conjunction with the Florida Department of Transportation Gateway Project. And if you recall, the Gateway Project was a toll road that connected I-275 to US-19, as well as the Bayside Bridge to I-275. This also forced the airport to make improvements due to this new roadway, and the airport took advantage to improve the current parking structure in front of the terminal. And this has included a new entrance, exit into and out of the airport, a new circulation around the terminal, increased parking spaces in both the short-term, long-term, and employee parking lots, increased rental car surface area. We consolidated the exit toll booth for short-term and long-term parking lots, upgraded the ground transportation lot to accommodate more taxis and more limousines, and finally, we gravelled an area for a secondary economy lot, which was able to accommodate 778 spaces. But more passengers equate to more parking demand. So this is a pictorial graph that shows the increase in passengers year over year over year, except in this instance of the 2020, the pandemic, the coronavirus, and with the unfortunate events in 2024 with back-to-back two natural disasters. But in 2025, we just released the numbers that we have surpassed the 2.56 million passengers at the end of November this year. We are slated, at the end of this year of 2025, to have either 2.65 to 2.7 million passengers. So what does that do for our supply? So our current supply, we have a short-term lot in front of the terminal, a walking distance to the terminal, with 272 spots. We have a long-term parking lot, also in front of the terminal, walking distance to the terminal, with 886 parking spots. We have two shuttled lots, an economy lot number one, we call Key Lime. So the three-letter identifier for the airport is P-I-E, pie. So we took iconic pies that are known to Florida to differentiate the two parking lots, Key Lime and Strawberry. So the economy lot, that's our primary lot, the Key Lime, that is across Roosevelt Boulevard. It's a shuttled lot, and the time it takes from the last stop to get the shuttle to the terminal is 10 minutes. When that lot is full, we have to open up the secondary economy lot that's open on demand. That's adjacent to the terminal, and that has 778 spots, and by the last time that, or the shuttle from the last stop to the terminal is six minutes. And then on peak periods, when we have to open up the overflow lot, that is once again across the street from the airport with 300 spots. So our current supply is 3,260 spots. With the increase in passengers and what lot capacity we have, where do the passengers park? So this is a pictorial graph since 2019 that shows the number of months, months at the long-term close from Friday morning, sometimes Thursday evening, but Friday morning, and it closes, and it stays closed until Sunday evening, and that's shown in blue. So you can see, year over year, we are continuing to close, in months, our long-term parking, and therefore, we're forcing passengers to park into the economy lot. When we force the passengers into the economy lot, and that lot fills up, now we have to utilize the secondary lot, and that's shown in green. And you can also see, year over year over year, that we are forcing passengers to park in not only in our economy, but then we're closing the economy and parking into our secondary. That's our last parking lot that we have. So if we look at 2025, we have closed the long-term lot 11 months. When I presented this, or when I presented this PowerPoint, it was the end of November. So 11 months out of 11 months, we are closing the long-term. And then nine months out of the 12 months, we have to close the primary economy lot and reopen the secondary economy lot. So those are shuttle lots. What happens when we have to force those passengers into those lots and shuttles? It's wait times. So if you're a departing passenger, it's okay, because they kind of trickle in. They show up about an hour and a half to three hours prior, and we can accommodate that demand. But it's when they arrive, when all at once, they get off the airplane, they walk to the baggage claim, they pick up the baggage, and now I have approximately 100 people that are waiting in line, trying to get onto that shuttle. It's too many people all at once for the number of shuttle seats that we have. Each year, the demand for parking continues to grow. So we have other challenges of the airport parking. I discussed that the demand for parking consistently exceeds available spaces, the increasing the operating months of the secondary economy lot, we're forcing passengers to park based on a limited availability, there's no advance notice of signage on the front of the road advising passengers that the lot is full. So imagine a family on a Friday afternoon trying to get to the airport and think that they're going to park in long-term. So they drive into the airport, long-term's closed. Now they have to follow the signs and figure out how to get over to the economy lot across the Roosevelt Boulevard, find a spot, get on the shuttle, and come back. We're putting that extra stress on to our passengers. We have been campaigning for the past five years, encouraging not to park at the airport, not just during peak periods, but for busy periods as well. And when we encourage passengers not to park at the airport, that equates to a loss of revenue for the airport. Unfortunately, this year, we experienced at-capacity. Every single 3,206 space was occupied over the Fourth of July. And what does that overall result? It results in overall decrease in customer experience satisfaction. So we went to a parking study, and we completed that parking study in 2025 of this year. And that parking study concluded by Kimberly Horns stipulated this, that we definitely need to increase the parking capacity. We needed to construct a four-level parking structure in the Strawberry Lot, once again, that is the lot that is adjacent to the terminal, and we're curious the number of stalls. But why not in front of the airport? Why do we have to have a, why are we building a parking garage that's going to have to demand a shuttle? Ideally, we want to build the parking garage in front of the terminal, but that would entail closing the short-term and long-term parking lots for a year and a half. Unfortunately, we don't have enough supply and time to be without those parking spots for that long. Therefore, the next best location was the economy lot adjacent to the terminal. Enhance shuttle service. Dedicate a priority route for the shuttle service. Minimize the wait times. And when we looked at that area, we can figure out that we can, we can have a shuttle that's going from that area to the terminal, not only from six minutes, we can reduce it by two minutes, and then have that shuttle transport between that facility to the terminal in four minutes. Upgrade the intersection. Reconstruct the intersection at the Roosevelt Boulevard Slip Ramp and Fairchild Drive. The greatest thing that when FDOT constructed the Gateway Expressway, they put in a 1,200-foot, almost a quarter of a mile queuing lane going from Roosevelt Boulevard to Fairchild Drive. Unfortunately, there's a stop sign. So what we want to do is we want to take out that stop sign. We want to put a roundabout, put a yield sign, and then therefore, it's seamless traffic going from the Roosevelt Boulevard into the Fairchild Drive, which then leads you into the parking garage entrance. Optimize costs. What is it going to cost? I have another slide that shows that. But we are going to make sure that before we even get to this point, are we going to be able to afford it? And finally, cater to the airport clientele for a user-friendly design. Ensure that the design is intuitive and approachable. Make sure that we have clear signage, signage on the Fair, or on the Roosevelt Boulevard before they even get in. Signage that knows how to get to that parking garage. Make it accessible, and by golly, make sure that it's seamless and stress-free for a parking experience for our passengers. So in summary, the parking study stipulated this, that we're going to build that parking garage on the economy lot adjacent to the terminal. That's the arrow in blue is showing exactly where that's at. We're going to build a 2,000-space parking garage. It's going to be four levels. Levels will be flat and the exterior ramp structure. But that parking garage doesn't take that whole entire surface area, so we're going to utilize and include over 300 surface parking spaces. We're going to dedicate that shuttle service to, to and from the terminal building. We're going to make that as efficient and as fast as possible. We're going to upgrade that intersection at the Roosevelt. Remember, we're going to take that stop sign away, we're going to put that roundabout in, and we're going to utilize that for an easy mode of transportation. We're going to make it user-friendly. And we're also going to put in canopies at the terminal curb size in Ticketing A, so our passengers don't have to board into plane from that shuttle in inclement weather. So what does the supply look like after we build that parking garage? Well, we're not going to touch short-term, so we still have short-term at 272 parking spots. We're not going to, we're not going to do anything with long-term, so long-term is going to remain as-is with 886 spots. We're going to take our current economy lot, the Key Lime Lot, the one that's across the street from Roosevelt Boulevard, and we're going to utilize that as overflow number one, and it's going to only be open during demand. We're going to take that secondary lot, the one that's, again, adjacent to the terminal, we're going to utilize that as our primary economy lot. That's where the parking garage is going to go, with approximately 2,300 spaces or a little bit more. And finally, we're going to utilize, still utilize our overflow for that peak-peak times. Those are the Fourth of Julys, the Thanksgiving times. We're going to call that our overflow number two, and that's going to remain at 300 spaces. All in all, we'll have 4,782 spaces, a net gain of over 1,500 spaces or a 32% increase in parking. So how much is it going to cost? Well, first, we're going to approach this as a design build. That saves us some money. We selected a phenomenal firm, Finfroc, which you'll hear a little bit of who they are. And we are going to, we have three sources of funding that we are going to afford this. The first one is an airport customer facility charge. That's a CFC. That, we planned ahead. Four years ago, we implemented a $4 per day charge on rental cars. You see, vertical parking structures have limited to no funding. So this way, this is one way we can collect funds and put towards for this type of a structure. We've been in communication with FDOT for grants, so they said that they're going to help us with the signage. They're going to help us with that circulation going from Roosevelt Boulevard onto Fairchild Drive. And we're going to make it intermodal, possibility of having bus depots. So we have a little over 6.2 million for that. And finally, airport reserves. Over, close to $30 million, we're going to dip into our airport reserves. But that's only one-third of our reserves. So this parking structure will be paid in full. No loans, no bonds, and we'll still have over two-thirds of a health reserve for necessary future projects. So how long is this going to be? Start to finish, 27 months. Remember, this is a design build, so I'm describing the whole entire project, but this ask is only for the design, and as soon as I know the final construction costs, I'll be coming back in front of the board for approval the end of next year. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Kyle Myers, who is the Vice President, Project Development of Finfroc Construction, to describe their company.
As Mark said, I'm Kyle Myers with Finfroc. We are a vertically-integrated design-build-construction company with a specialty in parking garages. We're located here in Florida and have built over 300 parking structures within the state of Florida, and parking garages are truly a specialty of ours. We have folks in our company, that's what they do every day, is they design and construct parking garages. So when the county head offered a design-build RFP for this, this is a project that fit right in our wheelhouse, and we're very excited. We are excited to get started and quite honestly, have begun to do some work in the background so that with a successful week here between today and Tuesday, that we can hit the ground running with Mark and his team and really provide the solutions to meet the needs that he was discussing. So I'll leave it at that, and obviously, I'll be here if you have questions for me.
Thank you, Kyle. So what are the next steps? So on December 16th, next Tuesday, we're asking for the Board of County Commissioners to approve for the award of pre-construction services. And this will allow Finfroc to start the design criteria of the parking garage and obtain the construction costs. And remember, step two is, once the construction costs are known, the airport comes, goes back to the Board of County Commissioners for approval of the construction services, which should be the end of next year. That is our summary of the parking garage update for a much-needed, and is an honor to start answering any of your questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. We're going to go around the room if there are any questions. Commissioner Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question, just a comment. I'm at the airport frequently. So I can attest to Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, how crowded and packed it is, but that's a good thing. And you guys, I've been over there and met with staff and taken tours, just recently, within the last month and a half or so. So I've had an opportunity to see why it is so important that we establish this additional parking for the residents that are coming here to visit. So it makes it a little bit easier for them to get over to the terminal areas so that they can catch their flights timely, and we can keep traffic moving. I think you all have done a really good job with the way that traffic does have to move around from drop-off point to being able to pick up your rental car, drop off your rental car, and then your ingress and egress back onto either 34th Street if they bear right to go back west, or if they want to hit the interstate and go left. So I support this. I really love the piece where you said, "No loans." That was, you know, flashing lights for me, that it'll be completely paid for, barring no concerns with the cost of supplies or anything like that. So I just want to thank you for a very thorough presentation, and I'm looking forward to this because pie is now known all over. Your direct flights are what people want, and they are at a very reasonable price. And the way to honor our clients and make sure that they're continuing to get that service is to make sure that they have ease of access to be able to get over to the terminal from their parking. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shear?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Chair-to-be. I had an opportunity last week to visit with Mark and tour the airport again, and I appreciate your focus on parking, because like, other than baggage issues, that's the number your focus on parking because other than baggage issues, that's the number one complaint I hear from my constituents is parking. So I think this is the best, we really got to focus on this. I did have a question. I haven't read the design bill proposal through all the way. Typically, ahead of time on a design build, you negotiate the profit and overhead allowable on the construction portion. Have we done that? What's a typical?
The county's standard contract form speaks to a cap of 5%, and that's written into the contract that is, I believe, before you.
Could you please start that over and speak up a little, please? Can't hear.
Sorry about that. Is that, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, the county's standard design bill contract does speak to that, and there's a cap of 5% for fee effectively, and so that is written into the contract before you.
Is that overhead and profit or just?
Correct.
Okay. Sure. 5%.
There'd be general conditions, supervision staff, that would be actual cost.
Right. Those are costs. I get it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Nowicki.
Thank you, Chair-elect and Chair currently. Question though, so it's really only a net gain of like 1,500 spots though, and it's $60 million. I mean, that's like $40,000 per a stall. With Pi not being really land constraint, have we exhausted all surface-level parking lot options before we dive into a multi-tiered, something that's not a daily, you know, we're talking just peak time in July and weekend? So we, you know, have we really truly exhausted all surface lot options before diving headfirst into $40,000 per parking space?
Yes, we have. There is no more surface parking land available for us. And this particular, it will be our primary lot, and that lot, so we do utilize on busy times the both economy lots. So the overflow lot that we utilize that has 300 spaces, that's the only time that we actually open that during peak times. But during busy times, that we do open up both economy lots.
Right, so we're not at full capacity most of the time is what you're saying?
Correct. We're not at capacity. We don't want to be at capacity all the time with...
So it just seems like we could be shortening a project somewhere else potentially by using one-third of our reserves. I don't know, I guess I would like to see that, you know, we've exhausted all of our surface-level lot expansion because there's a lot of land at Pi, you know. So I guess I'd like to see that we truly exhausted new surface lot options before this.
Right, and literally, we do not have any more surface land available to put in a parking structure. Plus, we want to make sure that it's the, also the shuttle timeframes that we don't want to continue to increase. And again, it's one of those where we're trying to make all that parking on this side, on the terminal side of the terminal, and utilize it as our primary. But right now, it's very difficult to continue to grow when we are exhausting all of our, both economy lots and filling that up.
The Commissioners, you've also heard from Allegiant, that's their biggest complaint, is parking.
Yes, sir. If I could offer...
Dave?
It's the proximity to the terminal that I wanted to double down on. You know, I was in Miami earlier this week, I was in Tampa later this week. You have parking decks adjacent, directly adjacent to the terminal. It's easy, that's the whole point. I think the long-term build-out, Commissioner, is that there would be a deck even closer to the terminal in the future. We just can't take down that lot and all of that right now. So this is really something that needs to be done now to address the parking supply issue, and then later, as things continue to grow, there's probably going to be another parking deck even closer to the terminal, if that's fair to say.
Any other questions? Commissioner Peters? Commissioner Peters, do you have a question?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm sure you're doing this, I just haven't seen it in anywhere. Are you going to move and have a central area for like Uber, Lyft, and any other transit? So, you know, like PSTA comes in there. So are they going to have a designated area where those people go so it doesn't cause congestion on the stop-ups? And, you know, some airports put them in the garages. I didn't know what your plan was, and I don't believe you mentioned it.
Right, so it's transportation network companies currently. It's a supply and demand, so no, we are not going to have passengers get on a shuttle just to get an Uber and a Lyft over to that parking structure. And currently, our arrivals for the TNCs is near a baggage claim. So no, at this particular point, we are not going to address the TNCs. But we have addressed in terms of having that supply of where those TNCs can wait until they get those passengers that go on the app and want that. And we utilize an area on the airport, so it's easy for them to get those Ubers and Lifts picked up from the terminal.
Okay, so the ones that are waiting, the taxi cabs, they're not waiting in front of the terminal? Are they waiting over where, like kind of where that rental car is, or where are you putting them?
All right, so the...
In the busy time, they can cause a big traffic jam, and if you can direct those people to a different area, then you free up that flow.
Correct. So the limousines and the taxis will continue to stay in our ground transportation lot, and that's not going to change. In terms of the Ubers and Lifts, we don't also want to put them exactly in the arrival sections because that's where our passengers also go, and we have a very short curbside for that area. So what we try to do is we try to put those TNCs between, right in the middle of the airport. And yes, this whole entire parking garage is going to look at all signage and address the signage issues that we currently have for our passengers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, I just had a few. On the, and I understand the nature of Commissioner Nowicki's question on the net gain of spaces to the gentleman who does all of this parking garage stuff. When I did the actual construction cost numbers, it looks like it's around $25,000, $26,000 per space. Is that in keeping with what you see around as far as construction cost per space?
Well, in order to, that cost is also a conjunction to fixing the Fairchild Drive, also the surface areas.
Yeah, we have, excuse me, can you hear me?
Get close, yeah.
Okay. We have begun to look at the overall budget and compare that to our preliminary concepts. As Mark was beginning to say there, within the overall budget, there are some other infrastructure items that allow the garage to happen with the traffic flow with the roundabout, actually paving the surface lot, which is, as you know now, is not paved. So those aspects are there within the overall budget as well. When you look at the garage itself, and this is something that we will be working through with the facility, with the county, to go through the various design options, at this point, it's anticipated that there's going to be some strategic upgrades for passenger efficiency, like the ramping system, so that there's free flow to get to the flat parking levels and things like that. So, you know, compared to the average, it will be on par, but just with some strategic upgrades in that regard that will, you know, add a couple thousand dollars of space. But we will be going through various options to ensure that, you know, we're matching the budget to the final concepts and that through the detailed design process, we're meeting the needs of the facility. Did that answer the question?
Yeah. And then, this is just, you have flat garages and having the outside traffic going up and down outside the garage versus inside, is there a cost difference to that, those design?
There is because we, when there's a dedicated ramp that is either on the exterior or weaves through, you build square footage associated with that where you don't actually park on it. Kind of a traditional parking garage has park-on ramp where you get from a square foot efficiency of the built structure to the number of parking spaces. It's slightly more efficient in a park-on-ramp scenario, but to speak to the peak times, you know, aircraft come in and all the passengers load, you have interaction with people backing out of parking spaces and trying to get down the ramp. So that's why the initial concepts, which originally came from the study that Kimberly Horn had done, indicate that we were using a dedicated ramping system.
Well, I'm going to ask questions probably like, I can't believe you asked that question, but why don't we do a fifth floor? Why, is there a height limitations or, to me, it seems like if you're, to the point about the net number of parking places, if we're going to build a structure, why not add one more floor?
It's a fair question. We, this is what we do all the time. So we have analyzed these sort of things in a lot of different facets. The unique aspects on this site is obviously next to the airport. So there is some height concerns that we need to work through with FAA. The legwork has been done on the four-level garage. I know that we're good there. The five is going to begin to flirt with that. I can't answer that question definitively. The other aspect is when you look at the net additional parking spaces within a given area, there's some truth to what you're saying of keep the footprint a little bit smaller. It's a fine tune between keeping the footprint right-sized with the ramping system to create the efficiencies associated with that. The other aspect is even though they are able to park cars there now, it's not a proper parking lot. So we're not dealing with the same net-add situation that we typically do if the entire lot was already paved. Does that make sense?
And then, Mark, these are for you. So we're taking money from the reserves. How's that affecting our expansion plan? Internal expansion plan at the terminal itself and the gates that we were talking about before? How is this affecting, this action affecting that?
It's not affecting it at all because we have slated $146 million for the terminal, and we still have that still slated. But with the terminal itself, we've really taken a hard look at what the current schematic design was, and we're taking and looking at some of the inefficiencies. So answering your direct question, taking a third of our reserves and putting this towards a parking garage will not affect the terminal renovations and...
The expansion plans that we have, that's not going to affect that.
No, but there is going to be a change in the current expansion plans, and that will come at a later date for us.
Is that because of this garage cost?
No. Yeah, Commissioners, so they're taking a hard look, and that was the feedback that they got from Allegiant, you know? And Allegiant says the first thing, first priority is parking. We need to solve that today. Now they're going to go back and relook at the terminal expansion plans and bring you back that, and that will be also aligned with the fee structure that they had previously proposed that we removed. So they're going to bring all those back simultaneously, but it's not because of the parking garage.
And I'm, again, the folks that sit on the TDC don't get all upset with the question, but these to me seem eligible for tourist development funds because of the amount of tourists that come obviously to our airport. Is that factored in at all in the thought process? And whether it's eligible or any of that?
I would defer to the county attorney's office. I have not looked at that issue.
And I apologize, Commissioner, what was the question?
The question is, can, because of the number of tourists obviously that use our facilities, are they eligible for TDC funds?
Well, that's never the analysis. We need to look at the statute and look at eligible uses. I would probably want to get Amanda Coffey on our staff to take a look at that, but again, we have to go back to the statute and look at the statute, but also our tourist development plan to see if it's something that's eligible.
I understand. And we certainly haven't had that discussion at the TDC, but I just, as we talk about what we want to do versus what we are able to do with funding, if we'll make sure we're covered.
And we are. And one of the parking studies too, Mr. Vice Chair, is ideally, you want a parking garage in front of the terminal, all right? You don't want a huge end-all-be-all parking structure that has shuttle service. So that's why we're trying to right-size that economy lot in order for us to take a hard look and really put it where our passengers want it. And that is in front of the terminal, no shuttles, be able to walk into the...
I get the location, I think it's great. I was just thinking about the other floor. Forget FAA for a minute.
Sure.
Sorry. But I'm sure they have thoughts on that too. So thank you for your comments. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Black Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How tall are the parking garages in Tampa? Because I seem to recall that there might be like seven floors. Yeah. Because I always have to park at the top.
Me too.
The top is nine.
Nine stories.
Are we, are you referring to Tampa International Airport?
Yes, sir. Yeah, TIA.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Peters answered it. I mean, obviously, it's big.
It's tall. It may be further away from the runways and, you know, yeah, so. I just think that's something we should explore while we're doing this huge construction project, just to see if that, we may not want to spend the money, but go ahead, Commissioner.
This meets our...
Commissioner Nowicki? Thank you, Chair. Yeah, and just one last thing. I mean, Blaine, did you say we're building another parking garage? Did you...
We are not. They're just talking about, in an ideal situation, you would have it in front of the terminal. This meets all of our parking needs now and into the immediate future. In the future, we could look at if the airport expanded and continues to expand, and ideal, now that you have this garage, you would be able to, you might be able to take down capacity in front to build it in the front. That's a futuristic, it's not part of this discussion, but that's what he was referring to.
It buries right on point. So we are constrained in land to some degree, and anytime you do a major build, you have to think about the next chess move. And so I was referring to that in context to your question about, well, why don't we look further out for other surface parking? And what I meant to illustrate was that the idea is to bring it closer to the terminal so it's easier access.
Well, so with keeping with that next chess move, and then I'll wrap up to go to the next thing, you know, maybe it would be beneficial to have like a long-term strategic workshop with the board to kind of see, you know, our vision for the airport long-term with these next chess piece moves in terms to reserves, the budget, to make sure, you know, the airport's moves are in line with where the board wants it to go at a long-term view instead of just getting it piecemealed broad in front of us. That's, would maybe be a good, good thing to have a workshop on.
Well, that was the point I...
Stop. All right, let the Commissioners talk. What? Go ahead.
This is, this meets our immediate needs. We have a parking crisis, okay? We need to address that. So that's the reason we're bringing that forward, and our recommendation is that we move forward on this design.
Right, I understand. But I think to the point, we have two new Commissioners, maybe at some point it would be good to have. I'm not talking about in lieu of what we're doing.
Okay.
I'm just saying, just to back away and maybe have that conversation, just to say where is the, what's that vision and clue us all in for discussion.
We can do that as part, when we bring back and talk about the terminal, that really talks about where we're going in the future.
Sounds good.
Okay? And that has to be aligned with the past sort of facility charges, which is what Allegiant contacted you all about when we brought that last time. And so all those can be tied in simultaneously.
That would be a good idea. All right. Anything else? Anybody? Thank you.
I'm sorry. No, I just would like to, in regard to what Commissioner Nowicki said, yeah, I would like to workshop this sometime in the future, after this, after we get the short-term need, but I would like to do that.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. It is.
Thank you. Don't let anybody know that I said that. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
All right. We're going to move on to the MSTU grant program.
So Amy's coming up. So our community coordinator's been working on updates to the grant program, so she's going to go over some ideas and thoughts and discuss that with you.
Good morning, Commission. We're going to talk about the MSTU grant program, short presentation, be happy to take any questions. Can you hear me okay? So we want to provide an update for the MSTU $20,000 grant program. We want to share the overview and where the funding comes from. We also have some proposed modifications for board consideration, and we want to talk about next steps in the timeline. This program began in 2016, and the purpose of the program was to provide nonprofits in the unincorporated areas with funding for community enhancements. Each fiscal year, nonprofit groups can apply for funding up to $20,000. And from fiscal year '16 to '25, the Board of County Commission has approved a total of 103 funding applications for a total of $2 million. And we did have an attachment in the agenda item that has all the breakdown of all the And we did have an attachment in the agenda item that has all the breakdown of all the grants that have been granted. This program is funded by the MSTU milage rate. And what it, the purpose is, is the MSTU tax enables the county to provide municipal-like services in the unincorporated areas. The current budget, we have appropriated $220,000 and from what I understand, that's been the appropriation consistently from the start of the program. And then it's set up that the maximum funding amount per application is $20,000. The purpose of the proposed update is to formalize what's been in practice to policy. We wanna clarify the guidelines and we also wanna clarify the process and, and make that more thorough for the applicants. We wanna address the increasing competitiveness that we anticipate going forward and the goal is to formalize the program via a resolution that the board can adopt in, in January. So, we have three slides to kind of outline our proposed changes, but we wanna clarify that this is for, not for community events, but for community enhancements and for assets. Updating the language to state projects must be in the unincorporated Pinellas County area and the reason for that is because this is getting funded by the MSTU unincorporated, the unincorporated MSTU. Adding that the project must be aligned with the county's strategic plan and then clarifying that a project cannot start before the Boyd County Commission approves their funding We also wanna clarify the guidelines and the processes. The processes had some vague language before, so we wanted to kinda outline that to be more precise and so that they understand what the process is. So, we wanna clarify that multiple entities will not receive funding for the same project. We wanna clarify that applicants can submit one application per fiscal year and we wanna add a new section clarifying the applicants, kinda outlining the process for how the payment part works, cause there was a lot of questions about that in the past. And so, addressing the competitiveness that we anticipate going forward, we want to establish a one-quarter period for the applicants to submit their request. So, opening it up from October 1st through December 31st to accept application. And then in the following few months, January, February, with a goal to come before you all in March with our funding request. And then we wanna bring forward a resolution to codify these, these changes next month in January, but I guess what I wanted to just add is these changes are tweaks to what we've been doing in practice, but it does formalize the process and it does formalize what the guidelines are. And it's a balance between trying to make it more specific, but still allowing for flexibility for the various needs for our nonprofits. I'd be happy to address any question.
Any questions? Commissioner Nowicki?
Thank you, Chair. Are we able to increase the limit? Can we maybe, you know, if the board wants, you know, to include that in the resolution to up the $20,000?
That's something that the board can discuss.
I think it may be worth just having that flexibility, you know? I think it was set a while ago and, you know, with inflation, it could be worth increasing that $20,000 limit just so folks have the option if everyone agrees or has thoughts on.
And the only thing I would say, we have, I, I was gonna ask about the reserve level, what we have in there. It, and again, it may change to your point, but we've never, I shouldn't say never, never is a bad word, but seldom ever use all of the funding that's granted in any particular year. So, that's why we have a reserve. Monies that don't get spent get put into this reserve. So, again, I think as we, as the program continues to roll out different areas of the county, unincorporated areas, may change that. And to your point, that might be an appropriate thing to discuss annually at our budget, in our budget time.
Do you know what the reserves are?
Yeah, so we did, it is on the spreadsheet, but I'll point it out right now in the spreadsheet, I mean by one of the attachments, but right now, our total is $336,000 and that included our $220,000 that's new for this budget and then so the remainder is roughly $110,000 that was carried forward from last year.
And that's dropped down over, it's, it got up kinda high.
It's dropped down. What's, what's really happened Commissioners is the community coordinators, it used to be, we really early only had four applications for, two in Palm Harbor and two in East Lake, right? And then a few others Seminole around the recreation. Those were the primary ones. But they've been able to work with a lot more community organizations to get different grants to help different types of things around the county. So, it's more balanced throughout the county.
Absolutely.
In the unincorporated areas. So, so we have been spending more money, but to your point and to Commissioner Nowicki's point, you know, that it, it was set and hasn't really changed since the program was developed. So, it's up to you.
Okay. Commissioner Shear?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I, just like Commissioner Nowicki was thinking, $20,000 is not what $20,000 was in 2016. 25 to 30 might be better. Also, I don't know why we would just limit an organization to one application. They might have multiple facilities and then you're putting them in a position, which do we want most and are we gonna get it? Maybe let them have one per location or one per property that they own? No, I don't know why we'd limit them to one. So, those were just my two comments on that. Yes.
Thank you, Chair. And so, you know, it's good, I think, to formalize the policy, but adding that the project must align with the county's strategic plan, so does that mean if it is determined it's not, then does that mean it won't come in front of the board and it would be limited at the staff level or would all requests still come in front of the board?
So, we think it's important to align with the strategic plan because that's what we're the governing, you know, body that leveling the military.
But any time we give recommendations, you'll see all of them. So, even if it's denial, it would still come.
It would still come.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so staff may not recommend it, but we could still do it if we.
If we say it doesn't align, you say it aligns, well, then it aligns.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Chris, do you have any? Anything for you, Kathleen?
So, I'm okay with going to 25. I don't know that we have to go that much higher, cause sometimes they'll just ask for all even when they just don't necessarily need it all. On the comment on multiple projects, I think it said in there that it would be one application per project. So, if you have multiple locations, you might have a project at one location, but a very different project at another location. So, I don't think that rules that out. Is that correct? So, if it's a different project, you can, you can do an application for both projects as long as they're different, correct?
You're right. It's either, it's either, you're right, Cath, Commissioner Peters, it's either project or applicant, right? So, if it's per applicant and I think, is it per project or per applicant?
We were proposing one application per entity.
Per entity, okay.
And Commissioners, first you can decide.
Hold on one second. Go ahead, Kathleen, sorry.
So, my thought is it should be per project and it shouldn't really matter about who the entity is if they have multiple locations, if it's different projects, cause one could be, you know, landscaping somewhere and then in a different location, pickleball courts. And I don't think that the organization be, should be excluded in having to pick one or the other if they're both viable, good, needed projects. So, so my thought is it should be, instead of having like the Boy Scouts and let's say Recreation Center asking for money for the exact same project so they get more money, that I don't agree with. It should be one application per project. I don't know that it should be limited to entity. Would be, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, Commissioner Peters, we seem to be getting in some thoughts about, you know, if an entity brings three projects and we're ranking them, right? You're, the staff will be ranking them, that at some point, there might be a cutoff between the ones you guys have ranked and, and recommended approval and another group below that. And it may be a second project for, you know, the East Lake Recreation Center, I'm just saying. And, and you may, by staff's perspective, put that below the line or a lesser priority and we can choose to do, you know, we can move it around, but I think that just gets to the point of some flexibility.
And Commissioners, if you want us to do that, we certainly will do that. The, I think the intent was that, you know, you, you want to give everybody an opportunity and so you, let's just take Palm Harbor Recreation. They could have four projects and all be very viable projects and take up the bulk of the money. And so, are you wanting, so when it was intended, it's like give one to them, give one to East Lake, give one to Library, give one to Seminole. That's, that's how it was created, but if you want us to do it to where they can all apply for multiple projects, I think you're gonna get a lot more requests though and then you're gonna have to rank them. So, it's however, I mean, you set it up, so it's up to you how you wanna manage the program, but that's likely what you would see in.
But if we're not using the money every year?
We, I think we're getting close though.
Of course, Seminole is brand-new and I can see them having a lot of needs as they're, they're, you know, expanding their.
You want it to where we say first priority will be, highest priority be for one and if, if second priority or, I mean, however you wanna do that.
I, I would say that you all, staff, would rank them and, and we'll deal with that. We'll deal with that question. There may be, as you said, there may be a lot, but we're gonna only, again, at 220 or if we go up 5,000 per project and we bump that budget a little bit, you know, we're still gonna be limited by that every year. So, it's not like we can do multiples. If we do, we're gonna do it at the expense of somebody else getting one. And if we think that's more important, then we should have that option.
Okay. So, if I'm hearing you right, what we'll do is say that it's one per project, okay? Not one per entity. And maybe like, you know, on the TDC capital program, I think you model, you tweak the, you know, each, each time you tweak the, the rules based upon how you, how the ranking occurred and you kinda refined it over a couple of times. So, we can try that and then.
Yeah, let's do that.
We'll bring them all to you and then you can decide how you wanna go from there.
I think that's kinda what we're hearing.
Okay.
I do like having a designated time.
Yeah.
I wanna open when it closes, so it's not all year long and, oh, by the way, I think I want $20,000 for this, you know, just out of the blue. So, I, I like that it's kind of structured with timeframes. So, good job.
Yeah, and what we might wanna do, and again, I'm just, you know, thinking, looking at the calendar right now, that we have two weeks and it cuts off, that we might, this year, might want to move that back a month or so or two. I don't know where we are in that.
I don't know where we're at on that, on this year's funding either, so.
I mean, we, we were anticipating putting this into effect next year.
Next year, okay.
So, this is kinda setting it up.
Perfect, thank you.
So, 2027?
Yeah, next budget, yes, yes. This year we'll still do.
Fall of '26, '27 budget.
Yeah, okay.
So, we wanna do '27?
That's next year's budget.
Yeah, I know, you're right. I mean, it is, but we were thinking starting January, I think we only have one application so far that had been approved, two, two applications have been approved so far.
Well, I'm just hearing all kinds of people, some places right now, scurrying to put projects in. We only have two weeks.
Yeah, I think we haven't communicated this well enough to do this in January.
Yeah, and maybe we just do, you, you could do it maybe the next three months, you know, the end of March this year, this year.
So, we could continue to collect applications through March of 31st and then close it, finish out the fiscal year and then we can start with the first quarter in fiscal year 2007 to have that be the opening period. Is that what I'm hearing?
Also, was there a specific reasoning on why it said that the project can't start prior to? I mean, cause what if it's not, you know, funding like the whole project and someone's like, oh, you know, it's a $200,000 project, can the county just chip in 20 grand, but you can't start until we approve it?
Well, I, I think the idea was that this is supposed to be, you know, projects that come before us, it's not to supplement already funded projects. It was trying to kinda be the last piece. You don't have enough funding in here. You would have, you'd have many more applications for, this is to try to be a partner on community-type projects, smaller-type projects. So, if, you know, everybody just threw an additional $20,000 ask in for their community project, you'd run out of funding real quick. But, and, you know, so anyway, if you're okay with that, we'll, we'll modify it for this year and then we'll put the timeframe, that fall time period in for the '27 budget.
Yeah, yeah, and the timeframe for the 2027 budget and this year, let's get the word out that we'd like to do it by the end of March so we can at least have some, you know? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. All right, we're gonna go on to item four, the Toy Town update, please.
All right, Brian's on.
Oh, and by the way, that, on the last one, that was, that's also including an increase from 20 to 25,000.
Yeah, do we need, we don't, we don't need a resolution on that, do we don't, cause we don't have it defined right now, do we? Okay, so we'll just automatically do that and bring this to you.
Thank you. Hey, Brian?
Morning Commissioners, Brian Lowak, President and CEO, visit St. Pete Clearwater. And I'm here this morning to provide an update on the proposed Toy Town youth sports project. So, what we're gonna do is I'm gonna give you a recap of kind of what's occurred up to this point. We'll update you on where we're at in the process, provide a timeline for moving forward and then look for some, some consensus towards the end and answer any questions that you have. Just as a reminder, this project is proposed to develop and operate a youth sports park facility on the former county-owned landfill known as Toy Town and we're doing this through a public-private partnership. And the goal of this project is to drive economic impact to the community through hosting, building a facility that can allow us to increase the number of youth sports tournaments that we host here in Pinellas County. Throughout the county, we've got a number of, of fields that we use for sports, however, we've kinda maxed those out in many cases. And what we see all around the Bay Area, really all around the country, is an increase in investment in additional facilities. And so, we, we commissioned a feasibility study a few years ago that showed that we do have a surplus, there is a surplus demand for additional fields here in Pinellas County. So, reminder, back in the 2023 state budget, we did receive an appropriation for $15 million to get this project started. The RFP for this went out in December of last year and we did this as a two-phase solicitation. So, phase one, we wanted to kinda get your qualifications, see examples of former projects that were similar to this, that you've built in the past on landfill, show that you have that experience, you're qualified. Then step, phase two of the process would be to actually get down to brass tacks and get into the details of what that project would actually look like. You all approved and FDEP signed the, the appropriation funding agreement in July of this year and after that, we met with FDEP, they came over, the folks from Tallahassee as well as their permitting office here in Tampa. They came over on November 3rd and 4th. We did a site visit of Toy Town on one morning and then we had a meeting to go over, kind of a grant kickoff, go over the provisions of that the next day. So, where are we at now? We're currently in phase two of the RFP and so we are soliciting, we had one respondent. They showed that they were qualified, they've done this work in the past around the country and now we're in the process to really see, well, they provided some high-level possibilities, some conceptual plans on what it could look like. Throughout the process, what we found is that in order for them to finalize an actual proposal, that includes what are the actual fields that we're gonna build, where are they gonna be located, how many? How many amenities are we gonna have? Where will they be? What is the pro forma of the project? What's the public versus private investment that's needed to get this thing off the ground? And then what is the potential ROI? Additional subsurface work was needed. We have a ton of data from throughout the years of what's under that landfill, but there were existing gaps that needed to be addressed in order to put pen to paper and provide a, a concrete proposal. So, what we did is we worked with the respondent, we had them list out a detailed proposal of everything that they needed to make sure that if we did work, we weren't missing anything and once that work was completed, they could, they had the, the data that they needed to put that final proposal together and bring it before us. We took that and we worked with Solid Waste, they have one of their subs, their geotech firms, GeoSynTech, who is on contract. They put together a scope of work and the, the cost for all that work is listed there at 200, approximately 250. So we took that scope of work, as well as the timeline. We sent it over to FDEP. They currently have it. So far, there are no questions. And where we're at is FDEP, before we can start that grant officially, once we start that grant, the phase one of the grant work, and each subsequent stage of that grant, we, we've got to do this, we've got to do this work. Once that starts, the clock starts to tick, and we only have a certain period of time for eat, to complete each task. And so, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. Yeah, so that subsurface investigation work, it's not considered remediation by FDEP, and FDEP's grant is only allowed to go towards remediation. So we've got to get this dated before we can start that grant. And so it would not be covered, those costs would not be covered from that FDEP grant. So a timeline moving forward, we're looking next, next Tuesday on your agenda, there's a budget amendment to procure that subsurface investigation work. If that is approved, that work will take place January through March 15th of next year. They will then turn that over to us. We'll look at it. We'll turn it over to the the RFP respondent. And then they will use that information to finalize their proposal that they'll submit to us. We expect to get that by June 30th of 2026. Staff will then take that, and we're, knowing that we're still in that RFP process, staff would evaluate that and make a recommendation on if we want to bring that forward to you all or not. And then we would, if we got approval from the BCC, that again would be, here's, here's what the project's going to look like. Here's the pro forma. Here's how many public versus private dollars would be needed, and here's the ROI. If that's approved, we would then initiate the FDEP grant and begin that project design and engineering in October of next year. So in wrapping up, staff, we recommend next Tuesday, hopefully, that we will get that approval of the budget amendment to start that subsurface work. And just a reminder, that would be paid for by TDC Capital Funds at a cost of 250,000. So that was a high-level overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Commissioner Shear?
Yeah, I just, I'm just a little surprised that TDC funds can use, be used for engineering investigation. I thought it had to be.
Well, I mean, and that kind of went to the same question I had about the airport. There's a lot of tourism involved there. There's going to be, this is going to be pretty much a tourism-driven project. But to your point, I don't, again, I'm, you know, that's usually, usually we get that determination made, but.
There's a specific allowable piece, which is around sports projects. And so it's defined within the TDC regulations.
Maybe we get the Little League World Series here sometime.
It would be a great, I mean, this has been talked about for a long time. It would, it would be a tremendous project. But we got to make sure that we understand what we're getting ourselves into. Certainly, these, these firms want to shift the risk to our side. We want to make sure we know exactly what we're getting into when we negotiate the, how this structure would, would work.
Yeah. And the TDC Board, this is their recommendation as well, right?
Yes, this is one of our priorities, and we've talked to them about this throughout the year and at the kickoff. And I, I would just add to this, we're kind of at that stage where, over the past however many decades, we've talked about this project, and we've had some proposals. But what we've seen is because we have this data gap, and folks don't know what's under there, they haven't been willing to take on that risk. And so we haven't been able to, to get the private sector to come in at a reasonable amount, limiting that public side investment. So we're trying to get to a, a point that we've never gotten before.
Any, any other questions at this point? Commissioner Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I know in our previous discussions, we were talking about the fact that we may not be able to utilize the entire space because of what may be underneath. And it, it would not be stable enough to have a structure, you know, on top of it. Plus, there may be gases and all other kind of stuff that we couldn't remediate safely to have the facility there. Can you remind me of what that, what that area is, square footage, or?
Yeah, so I, and Blaine will correct me if I'm wrong, but that total acreage out there is approximately 200, 275 acres. And when we put this out, we, we did it with, we, we thought that approximately 95 acres of that would be buildable. However, what this is going to do is see if there's a potential to build on other areas. We simply don't know what's under there, and what materials that consists of, and how deep that goes. So this will answer those questions, and it will, one of the other things that we, that we found out throughout the process is if you put just a bunch of fields with no vertical construction, it's, we can do that. However, it's going to be difficult, and you likely wouldn't receive much private sector investment, because there wouldn't be money to be made. However, if there is an opportunity in some areas of that property to go vertical, that could entice private investment in the project.
The cost of construction is significantly different if you do buildings.
Oh, yeah.
In areas where you have landfill underneath it. So that's, that's part, that's part of the scaling of the facility, and to have a clear picture when you're trying to determine the ultimate project that you're looking at.
And if you're talking about maybe a Little League playoff, or finals, or, you know, whatever, what'd be going on there, that they currently hold in other places, you certainly need those accessory pieces for people to stay, or a restaurant, or something that goes along with it, to entice people to want to come, versus going to Disney's, Downtown Disney Sports, or whatever that is. In, in maybe some of the information you all have been able to gather, the amount we think may be usable for redevelopment, is that in line with perhaps where other communities may have something similar to what it is that we want to do?
Tough question to answer. But I will say, in some of the conceptual proposals that we received from the respondent, we have an opportunity to be, to have a premier facility that would have the highest number of fields anywhere in the southeast United States. And given that, with the proximity of the beach, we have the potential to have the best youth sports facility in the country.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Any other questions? Yeah, so that 275 acres, doing the math here, that's over 12 million square feet, 12 million square feet. And even if only 10% is buildable, you're still at almost 1.2 million of square. And that's a low percentage of, so, so do you envision, other than like fields, and maybe buildings that are around the field that, you know, that, that kind of thing? Or are we talking about also a private money-making opportunity with a hotel, or, you know, that kind of thing?
Yes, sir. So, and Paul Sacco's been an incredible resource on this as well. To answer your question, and Commissioner Flowers, the further, the more that you develop of the site, the more exponential the costs are. It looks flat from the interstate. It is anything but. And this investigation that we're asking you to approve will let us know how, what the risk is underground for that type of thing. So our first inclination was it was about a third of the site, and as you get further back, it gets more and more expensive. Without this data, the developer has shown us a very big picture, but they can't, we can't get them to confirm it. So.
And, you know, we're going to, having this type of information, we're really us get into the details of the negotiation. Obviously, they, they want us to build it, and they'll, they'll run it, you know, and, and then take the money that they receive to do that. Obviously, we're going to, we, we want to cap our expense and put fields down and let them build. And, you know, I mean, so that's going to be the negotiation, you know?
Well, my off-the-wall idea years ago was, let's get rid of the mound of trash and conveyor it over to our waste plant. And I think staff took about a week to look at that and said, no, too expensive. Thank you for your idea. So, but that would have gotten rid of that pile, right? And then, you know, but yeah, so you're right about the, the flat, it's, it's not a Mesa, a flat object. So that would be part of the process, right, to, to flatten that out? So it's usable.
And it's got to have caps. I mean, you've got to have, you know, clay caps and all those things for between any kind of plain surface. And so there's all kinds of requirements.
Stormwater ponds.
Yeah. And this, I mean, this, as you've pointed out, this does happen. If it's done right, it can be a really good asset. I mean, we've got some apartment buildings in the area of, in Pinellas County that sit over old, old trash facility, garbage facilities, waste plants, and have been used, abused and monitored and all of that. So it's certainly something, I'm glad we're looking at it. Any other comments, thoughts? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Barry, have we given any thought to like an amphitheater as well? Because you can do both. You can have fields and an amphitheater, hold concerts and bring in big, you know, that kind of stuff, too. It doesn't have to be, it's my understanding, there's going to be a significant amount of fields being brought into Clearwater in a public-private partnership, that I saw the plans on a couple of weeks ago. That's incredible. And a potential minor league soccer stadium. I mean, it could be that, you know, I know we've been planning this, but that, that may produce sooner. And then if we look in the inventory, are we going to need all of that again? So I think whatever you do, it's going to have to be flexible, so that it can be multiple things instead of just fields.
It's a fair comment, Commissioner. I mean, I think we're, we're all looking at, how do we put this back into usable space, you know? And, and the ball fields have come up for a number of times. Brian, you have.
You raise a great point, Commissioner Peters. And we are in, working in coordination with the city of Clearwater, with the city of St. Petersburg. Pinellas Park obviously has the new sprawls facility that's getting ready to open. And so these fields, we're building with our, our other municipal partners to support their fields. None of those fields that they have throughout the county can, can accommodate the demand that exists for these tournaments.
Brian, I don't mean to interrupt, but my intuition tells me you haven't seen this plan. This is a golf course that's going to be transformed into 20 or 30 fields and a soccer stadium, a minor league soccer stadium, indoor, outdoor, pickleball, you name it. It's huge. And so if you haven't seen it, I'm happy to hook you up with the gentleman who showed me the blueprints and the design, and it's spectacular. And it looks exactly like what we'd have envisioned there.
The same, the same, the same firm that is doing that project is the firm that was the respondent to our project. So we're in coordination with them on that.
Okay, well, that's good to know. That's very good to know.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing, like, where's that other project that we're talking about going to be? Where is it?
It's, it's, it's in Clearwater. It's a golf course. Hasn't really been formally announced, so.
Oh, the golf course near the airport?
Over by the airport.
The little airport?
Um.
That's a golf.
We'll check it out, Commissioner.
Okay.
I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll check it out. And that's always been our concern. I mean, every time we've looked at this in the seven years I've been here, it's, oh, wait a minute, Pasco County just built one. Okay, wait a minute, Hillsborough County built one, Manatee County built one. Well, is there really a demand? We don't want to build it, right? And so, you know, we're, I'm very sensitive to that. And so we're going to look at that, all of that, before we come back to you. But we're going to need to know this information, because that's going to be part of the negotiation about that public-private partnership. So, yeah.
And I'm not concerned about Hillsborough or Pasco, that.
Pasco's has been horrible.
But, you know, if L.A.'s going to become another bigger soccer stadium, and then if Clearwater's going to do that plan, that, and that, and I'm going to tell you, that plan is quite impressive. It's very, very, very impressive. Then it needs to be something that isn't going to contradict it, or it's going to enhance it. And if you're working with the same firm, then I'm not concerned. Because they won't want to be duplicating what they're doing. They're going to find something more.
Yeah, to your point, Commissioner Peter. I think they're all, and the good news is, I think they're all in communication. City of Clearwater, Brian's group, and the people that will do the work, obviously, same, same group. So that's, that's reassuring. And you're right, we don't want to do something that we don't need. So, for sure. Anything else, Commissioner Peters?
No, I'm all good, thanks.
Okay.
On that one.
Okay. All right. Anything else from anybody?
No, I just, you know, what my thinking was, I'm glad to see the TDC wants to spend the money, so we can figure out what we can do. We really won't know what we can do until we get out and drill some holes.
Right?
Right. Yeah.
All right. We're good? All right. We're going to move on to permanent supportive housing.
Okay, so lots changed since we put this agenda item on. So I'll let Karen explain the changes at, at the federal level. And then, I'm not even sure what she's looking for, from you now. So I'll let her explain that.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Yachom, Human Services Director. And I'm going to talk to you today about permanent supportive housing. So I'm going to walk you through what has changed, where we are today, and then I'm going to propose a short-term, time-limited solution to help provide our community a little bit of stability while we're awaiting what HUD changes are going to be coming forward. So what is permanent supportive housing? Permanent supportive housing is a housing program that combines long-term rental assistance with support services for individuals with disabilities who are experiencing chronic homelessness. It is a housing-first approach, meaning there are no promises or guarantees that the resident needs to agree to prior to becoming housed. Eligible residents must have a disability, must be experiencing homelessness, and priority is given to those with a history of chronic homelessness. Permanent supportive housing has two benefits. The first I want to focus on is stability. So it increases housing stability and autonomy for residents. It provides long-term housing assistance with ongoing rental assistance. It improves health outcomes for participants by coordinating primary dental, behavioral health, and social services. It also has cost avoidance measures. So housing this population reduces the strain on other systems of care. On average, the jail cost per day is a little over $164 per day. The average cost for an ED visit in Florida is $3,394. An ambulance transport is a little over $1,000 per trip, and a crisis stabilization bed night is around $490 for adults and children. What these costs do not include is the cost of enforcement, so law enforcement and first responders responding in community to public sleeping, camping, or those that are experiencing homelessness. And this does not include the daily costs for sheltering, so emergency shelters, that many municipalities and counties assist with funding for. So permanent supportive housing was really built on housing first. So again, this is, this is no agreement, no sobriety, no drug testing, no agreeing to services. It is housing first, and then wrapping individuals around with those services to improve their stability. HUD worked on this for many, many years, adopted it formally in 2012, and this commission in 2016 adopted a resolution to which many of our programs really have built the foundation of housing first in all of our contracts moving forward. Bolley Centers is one of the leading affordable housing communities. And with me today, I have Kevin Roan, the President and CEO. Bolley's mission is to provide at-risk populations with access to safe, affordable housing, along with behavioral health and employment services to support their personal growth. In the, in the time that Bolley has been existent since 1970, they have built 15 affordable housing properties in our county, 249 affordable units, and they are housing 439 residents, and that includes veterans, seniors, families with children, and individuals. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the HUD changes, kind of what brought us here, where we are today, and what I'm proposing. So earlier this year in July, an executive order was issued, and it was titled Ending Crime and Disorder on America's Streets. And in this, this was really, I would say, the first impression that we were starting to learn where HUD was headed. In this order, there was. In this order, there was discussion regarding restoring civil commitment, comprehensive services, additional outcomes for housing programs, more of a focus on enforcement of illicit open substance use and public camping. And that was the first time, I think, we really saw that housing first was being eliminated. So there's some language in that order regarding housing first. While that was being deployed, there were some national conversations about the Continuum of Care HUD grant. So currently, it was a two-year award, and at the time, there were discussions that it was going to shift from a two-year award to a one-year award. There was discussions about possible limits to funding permanent supportive housing, but nothing really was concretely known until the night of the federal shutdown reopening. That was when HUD issued their Notice of Funding Availability, which really laid out some of the new requirements that HUD was moving forward with. On the evening of the 13th, what we found out was that the two-year award was changing to a one-year award. The focus was moving away from permanent supportive housing, away from rapid rehousing, and it was capping new funding at 30% for those two housing strategies. And just of note, in Pinellas County, the funding amount that is received by the continuum is $6.5 million. And 74% of that housing, that funding in Pinellas County funds permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing. So we were going to be facing significant cuts with the HUD funding once it comes forward. Additionally, there were new priorities outlined in that HUD Notice of Funding Availability. So transitional housing was the focus. And transitional housing really is housing readiness versus housing first. There's a large focus on street outreach, more enforcement for public camping, overnight sleeping. There's a significant focus on behavioral health and wraparound services. And there were specific requirements that talked about 40 hours of clinical services per week, which is tremendous for people to really engage 40 hours of service. And there was a move away from congregate shelters. So the, the priority really is non-congregate stabilization beds, which is a private room, private, private restroom for those that are engaged in shelter. And so all of that kind of changed Monday afternoon. So HUD removed the Notice of Funding Availability Monday afternoon based on some litigation. At this time, we don't know when the new, when the new notice is going to be released. We don't know what's going to change in the new notice. But what we do know is that Bolley, our partner, has two contracts that are ending at the end of January and the end of February. And that is going to be significant for our community. So in those two HUD grants, there are 361 Pinellas residents currently housed. And that includes over 100 children, over 100 seniors, 40 disabled veterans, 89 individuals with a physical disability. And I want to point out, in all of those units, the head of household has a severe and persistent mental illness. And so that is schizophrenia, that is schizoaffective disorder, bipolar disorder. So this is a very vulnerable population that funding is going to be ending at the end of January, end of February. The reason I wanted to bring this here to you today is that Bolley is considered, you know, the landlord. And if funding is ending, notice has to be given to those residents. And so those residents are at risk of receiving a notice from their permanent housing placement that they will no longer be housed. And that's a significant crisis that we could be experiencing in less than 60 days in our community. So the short-term solution that I would like to propose in this ever-changing landscape is that I would like to request that we assist with the shortfall. So the fiscal year shortfall for Bolley Centers is around 1.5 million, with the calendar year shortfall of around 2 million. Currently, in the Human Services budget, I'm proposing a little over 900,000 of current budgeted programs to shift to assist with aiding in that shortfall. The portion of this funding comes from our High Utilizer Program. So it, it was called PSET years ago, but it's the High Utilizer Program. And if you can remember, we've taken a few chunks from that program, the first being we moved funding to the Sheriff's Office last year, the year before, to assist with additional case managers at Safe Harbor, and additional case managers to assist with public sleeping enforcement. The second portion of that funding is funding the Health Program Evaluation for our Health Care for the Homeless Program. And this remaining 172,000, which is in the budget currently, could assist with that shortfall. The second funding allocation is our CABI program. And the CABI program really aligns with permanent supportive housing. So our team has been working on procurement for that budgeted service. And what the CABI, the CABI program, it is behavioral health services in the field for individuals and families who were recently housed. So they were homeless before, they're now housed, and it's funding those behavioral health services to keep them stable. So it does really align with kind of the permanent supportive model. So my request is that we pause that procurement, shift this year only to provide time so that notice does not have to be given to residents. It allows the system to plan and hopefully respond in other ways for the shortfall if those HUD funds remain kind of how they're projected to. Other options that are being explored in the community, because it's not all an ask of Pinellas County government, Kevin and his team have been working with the Juvenile Welfare Board, because again, there are over 100 children that are in these permanent supportive housing units. And the municipalities are also working very diligently. So the city of St. Petersburg, city of Largo, city of Clearwater have all been at the table. And Pinellas County Housing and Community Development, I asked them to be here as well because there are possible options with home ARP funding as well that we could explore potentially as a short-to-long-term solution. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Just to summarize, Commissioners, this is a one-time-only, and I want to make this really clear because we could see a lot of different federal cuts. We're not, any federal cuts will be a federal cut. We're only providing time for them to figure out a long-term solution. So this would give them until September, rather than having to implement and kick people out come January. But this, so this is a one-time-only funding. We're not, we're not proposing to us supplanting a federal grant, which would be, we can't do, because there's going to be way too many federal cuts for us to be able to do something like that. So we wouldn't set that precedent. This is to allow them time to help with other types of transitional-type services, so.
And that's $1.5 million shortfall that you said, and we're talking about $900,000 of that shift in our budget to help that.
To help, to help close that gap.
Okay.
Yes.
For this year only.
Commissioner Latval.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has JWB been receptive to helping?
I would say yes. So Kevin is here. Kevin met with their interim CEO, and it's my understanding that he would be proposing a funding request to their board in the coming month, I would say.
Okay. Thank you. No, we have a JWB meeting next week. So maybe that'll be on the agenda.
Commissioner Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I shared with Barry that I was asked to serve on a National Association of Counties work group because of all of the changes that are not just affecting Pinellas County, but they are affecting us quite a bit because we are landlocked. And so some of the funding metrics that they are proposing is based on the number of new units you can provide. But when you're landlocked, you are not able to provide as many additional units as you would like to, even for transitional or supportive housing. So more dollars are going to other communities than they would be coming to us, even with the new formula. So we are opposing that. And we just had a meeting yesterday. That was a very long meeting, but a very good meeting. We had one congressional person at that meeting, as well as staff from HUD. So I have to thank them for being willing to talk with us, but it doesn't seem like there's any positive resolution on the horizon at this point. I, I reach out and I forward information as well to the city of St. Petersburg primarily because of the larger portion that they've been having. Not that other communities don't have issues with homelessness, but the larger portion that they've had there. So Amy Foster has been very communicative, as well as the mayor. I support this. I did ask Barry a question. I'm not sure if the Bolley representative here could speak to this. So I support, sir, come on up. How you doing? Come on up. I'm not, I support what, what's being asked of us because it is for time limit, and it does give us a chance with the very limited opportunities we have out there to place families. Because Bol is really the only organization that also provides a support personnel right there on staff to continue to be there for some of those wraparound services that the clients need in order to help them be successful. So we're not just putting them out, saying, you know, go fly and be happy. We're giving them the tools they need. But I did ask Barry if Bolley themselves, if you all were looking at any of the reserves you have that would lend to the request to help extend the timeframe by which these residents would be able to receive housing, but support, and would give us more time, really, give you all more time, really, to look for places where these individuals could reside. So I don't know if you and your board have had a chance to kind of look at your finances to see if there's anything additional that you could veer this way as well.
Yeah, we, we probably have about maybe six months of reserves that we could use to extend and add to this time. You know, as far as cash reserves to help, that would come out of our, you know, investment accounts, turn to cash.
Okay. So the project that we just cut the ribbon on, it's absolutely wonderful, off of 31st Street, across from Boyd Hill. That is a, a project that would be, that would not be impacted. Okay, all right.
Yeah, the, the numbers that were up here is, is just the numbers that Bolley serves through the homeless continuum of care. We have a, a lot of different housing programs funded through different buckets, so that project is not part of this.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's why I asked the question, because Barry was like, I don't know, I said, well, I'll ask him when he comes.
I did just want to comment also that, you know, Bolley operates six residential treatment facilities. And for many, many years, in our early years, transitional housing is what we did. It was really the shift in focus to permanent supportive housing, that how Bolley got into that. So we're, our experience is in both segments.
Could you please introduce yourself? I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. Yes, I'm Kevin Marone, Bolley Centers President and CEO.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
I'm sorry, I just asked you a question and you started responding, I didn't say that, so. But thank you, I just wanted to get clarification for myself on that one. And like I said, I do support what it is that we're trying to do, because if we did not help, and when I say we, I mean all the municipalities that are looking at what they have to bring to the table. These individuals would be on the streets, some would be arrested, put in jail, where they're not going to receive the type of services, and then there's nowhere for the jails to refer them because the services aren't available anymore. As far as the committee that I serve on, and then going up to DC, we're going to continue to strongly advocate, and this is one of the examples that I provided on the call, that these are real people, on top of ones that are already homeless. This will be on top of that, and some of our more at-risk individuals that could cause an issue, you know, out in the community. So thank you so much for what you do. And like I said, it wasn't that I wasn't supporting, just kind of wanted to see where the dollars are landing.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Nauwiki.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Kevin. You know, I think, you know, as you pointed out in your presentation, I mean, this is exactly kind of what President Trump was getting at with the executive order. You know, in the executive order, you know, it talks about tens of billions of dollars spent by the federal government, billions of dollars spent by state government, millions of dollars spent by local government, that doesn't address the root causes and provide actual wraparound services. You know, we fund the HLA for administrative staff. I mean, that's exactly what the executive order talks about, rooting out, funding for, and provide it to actual service providers like Bolley Centers. I mean, so what I would like to see is us be in line with the executive order and really root out this, what I would say, and what President Trump would say, is wasteful spending that go to administrative services that don't actually provide the services that Bolley Center provides. So is there a way that we can cut funding to the HLA for their administrative staff and give that to the actual service that keeps people off the streets?
So what we fund HLA is a combination of administrative staff, as well as staff who provide diversion services. And while it's in the administrative bucket, they oversee the data that is required for us to remain competitive. They oversee initiatives such as our cold night sheltering program. They oversee the cooperative applicant process, so they facilitate the entire application to HUD. And so I think cutting that organization, it would hurt our community as far as some of the administrative functions that that lead agency is responsible for.
Well, I mean, so to cut out the administrative staff part, you know, I think there's one position that's funded for those, for what you just talked about. And so it's looking at eliminating or reducing some of the administrative leadership salaries that we fund, and then shift that money to Bolley's. I mean, because again, that's the root of what the executive order was at, is that we spent tens of billions of dollars collectively as a nation to address, but we haven't addressed the root cause. And I think, you know, we would see that percentages-wise, it's, we're going up and not down. So we're spending more money, and the problem is only getting worse. Would you agree?
I think in Pinellas County, our situation is getting better. So, you know, our homeless point-in-time count is lower, our unsheltered count is lower. I think there's risks with reducing funding to the lead agency organization. You know, we've struggled, or that organization has struggled with long-term substantial leadership. This is our fourth CEO, I believe, for that organization in the last few years. So I think cutting funding could hurt the system, but of course, that's a, a policy decision of this board.
Yeah, I mean, I would guess, I guess, you know, I would just like to be in more in line with, you know, the federal government, you know, is that we're funding actual services, not administrative staff. And so, I mean, I think that's the highest and best use of taxpayer dollars is to fund, you know, Bolley Centers versus funding an agency that just then passes the money to Bolley Centers. So, you know, we're just paying for pass-through services and for them to, you know, take money off the top. But I'm supportive of, you know, the Bolley Centers and funding, though I guess I would just like to see it done month by month, instead of just, I don't know if that's the current plan, or if we're just writing a check for the full amount, or if it's going to be broken down month by month.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be a check. So the contract that we currently have with Bolley, we would amend the contract to include this funding if needed, so it would be an up-to amount. And then in the contract, we could look at, you know, cost reimbursement, so submitting monthly invoices based on actual costs, and reimbursing up to the 907.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer that, would be my preference.
And that's the balance of this year, calendar, not calendar, but fiscal year.
Yes, and a portion, so about 65% of what is needed this fiscal year.
Yeah.
1.5 needed to shore up the gap for this fiscal year, 2 million calendar year, if the cuts go through.
And as you've pointed out, we're working on a long-term, I mean, a lot of people, a lot smarter than me in this industry, are working hard to figure out what that long-term solution to a real problem in our community.
Yes. I, I would say, you know, right now, we're in, you know, crisis management, the system is, and we have to figure out what HUD's strategy is going to be, how the community's going to respond, which programs are going to be recommended to HUD for that funding. And then simultaneously, so that parallel path, is we have to figure out how we are not going to have a homeless crisis with this vulnerable population. And, and there's a lot of complexities, too, which, which I failed to mention, but some of the properties that Bolley has developed have very strict restrictions on how they can be used. And so I have housing and community development here. Some of those are Pinellas County-funded programs that were built on this being a permanent supportive housing or affordable housing, and may not just be able to shift with what HUD's new recommendations are. And, and we're just one of those funders. The city is funders, and I believe Florida Housing Finance is the other funder, that all of that legal, legalese has to be untangled if there's a shift in how those units are used.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, we've obviously got an issue here. And keeping us, and keeping you and keeping us in parallel course so that we understand real time, what's going on, what the analysis is, what the implications are. on, what the analysis is, what the implications are, is going to be really important. And I want to see it in September, for October. I mean, so just keeping us apprised of the issue and the problem and the complexities of it all is going to be really, really important to get, you know, support.
Absolutely. I remain, I'll remain, I remain very engaged in all of the planning and absolutely will continue to send updates.
I am sure you do Karen. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so this will be coming to us on Tuesday?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, hold on one second. Commissioner Peters, just one second.
End of January.
What's that?
I'm trying to get an answer out of Karen.
So the funding ends end of January. And so we have a current contract, we can bring it to you in January for that date.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's not on the agenda, it'll come to you in January.
It come to, okay. And we only have one meeting in January and that's like.
Believe me, we will, we will make that deadline, believe me.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I think it's obviously important that, I mean, I certainly am supportive of that gap funding that we're talking about of services that are critical. And you listed the number of folks and the types of folks that, I mean, I'm talking about children, you're talking about vets, you're talking about seniors, you're talking about all others that are part of this. So, I mean, this gap, gap funding is really critically important. So I'll be supportive of it. I know it's going to be January, it's going to be late January to the deadline, which is what, late January?
So the funding, the first round of funding for Bowley ends end of January, yes.
Commissioner Peters, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
That's okay. My app won't let me raise my hand, so you're stuck with me interrupting you. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So, you know, Karen, you did a great job presenting this and I appreciate you putting in the cost per day. And I know we didn't include courts and we didn't include all the other things that come with that. But I also want to throw in a reminder that the legislature passed a law that said if we have homeless people sleeping in front of businesses or on businesses' property, the property owners can sue us. The business owners can sue the local government. So, so if you imagine putting 300 people who are disabled or mentally ill back on the street where they had stability, had the ability to have a normal life, enough wraparound services to function without burden some of our health systems and our jail and our court systems, this is disappointing at, you know, at best. But I just wanted to remind you that we also would be liable if they're sleeping camping out, that we can get sued because they're camping out. So I just wanted to remind you of that. But thank you. I'm not going to say anymore.
Thank you, Commissioner Peters. Anything else? Okay, I'm not sure that you've gotten the green light, but I think there's a general consensus of support, so keep us posted even between now and the commission meeting, obviously through Barry, so that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Critical, critical, critical. So thank you.
Thank you all very much.
For being here as well. I appreciate that.
Okay, Commissioners, next item. You're going to get a.
Go ahead.
One second.
Yep. Just, I'm not trying to, that's not with you, it was with the MSTU program deal. Just for clarification, we're currently at $20,000 and we talked about going to $25,000, which is a 25% increase. The 220, 25% increase would be 275. We have enough to cover the regular budget and we have enough in reserves if we need it, but it just, just so when we bring that back, let's make sure we have that addressed too for this transition period because there's no point in upping the 20 to 25 if we're not going to up the overall budget.
Yeah.
We're just not, we're not doing what we're hoping to do, which is.
I guess that would be the question then Commissioner, do you want to do that for this year or for next year? We, you want to increase the budget? We have a budget of 220,000 and we have, and you're right, we have additional funding.
We do have reserves to cover it.
We have reserves to cover, so do you want to increase the budget for this year?
Well, you're going to bring that back to us.
We can do that.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll put the line where we want to put it.
Do you want to see it with the applications? Do you want us to go ahead because?
I think the 25,000, you heard that from us, so.
So you want to put that out? So we'll put that out in the notice. I'm sure all the agencies will like that, so. So we'll go ahead and increase that amount. Then we'll have to bring a budget amendment for you.
A budget amendment, is that using of shifting reserves? I just want to make, if we're not going to do it, let's give that direction. That's all I'm saying.
We would appreciate that.
Yeah. Commissioner Peters?
I do not want to increase the budget. I mean, I don't want to increase our budget to add more to our budget. So if you do it next year, that's next year and the only thing I caution about next year, I mean, if we did 25, then you just have fewer grants. And I'm okay with that, but I wouldn't change the budget. And I don't think I'd even made a commitment next year about increasing the budget because we don't know what's going to happen with property.
No, we don't.
And we have to be very cautious about thinking of giving money, you know, next year and stuff like that. We have to be very cautious and considerate about that. So if you increase it to 25, I think there's just fewer grants. I don't think you increase the budget.
Okay, so, and I don't necessarily, and I, and I hear you and I don't necessarily disagree. You're bringing us the applications, we're going to put it at 25,000 and we'll decide if we're going to.
Where you want the line.
Yeah, where that line's going to go. Right now, we're planning on just using the 220.
Okay.
But if this commission decides they want to do more, we'll make an adjustment on the fly.
That'd be 220 plus the reserves, but I don't want to increase the budget either.
Yeah, no, and right now, we're talking about just the 220.
Right.
And then if we want to use any of the reserves for the additional projects.
For the remaining below that line.
Then we'll, we'll decide that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
All right. Okay.
So Commissioners, you're going to get a short presentation today and a more detailed presentation come January regarding our CDBGDR program. And the reason I say that is because you're going to want to get into the outcomes while they're still in the evaluation stage. You'll see those next month. So it's kind of a two-stage presentation here. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you Barry. Good morning Commissioners. Matt Spore, Assistant County Administrator. Last time you all spoke on this was in early October when you gave us some policy recommendations for your first five people, first Pinellas programs. A lot has occurred since that time. We've developed our in-house team. You're going to meet some of them here today. We've started to go through over 3,500 applications and of course, well, we launched the programs end of October. We also have had open lines of communication back with HUD now that the federal government is back up and running and there's some minor approvals that we're waiting on from them that are administrative, so they shouldn't take long. If all that goes as planned, we will be approving and getting checks out the door within the next week and before Christmas. Today, we have Erica Henry, who is our Disaster Recovery Program Manager with Pinellas Recovers, and she's going to kick off the presentation. Of course, Ryan Flannery is here and he's a principal with Government Services with BDO. And then we have some other individuals, but I'm going to just hand it over to Erica right now to give you a summary of where we're at and then we'll answer any questions you may have.
Good morning Chair, Commissioners. My name's Erica Henry. I'm the Disaster Recovery Program Manager for Pinellas Recovers and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm also here with Ryan Flannery of BDO and we're excited to give you some updates about our CDBGDR program and our People First housing programs that launch first. As you know, on October 20th of 2025, we launched our five housing programs for People First and we've received over 3,553 applications in less than 60 days. We have five housing programs open. The first is the Disaster Relief Reimbursement Program, the Homeowner Reimbursement Program, the Home Buyer Assistance Program, Local Landlord Rehabilitation and Reconstruction, as well as our Homeowner Rehabilitation and Reconstruction Programs. As you can see from the graphs on the screen, our two most prominent applications have been for the Disaster Relief Reimbursement Program and our Homeowner Rehabilitation and Reconstruction Our applications are able to be submitted online by phone and also in person at one of our two intake centers. 75% of our applications thus far have been received online. Our next slide is a map of Pinellas County and each of the blue dots represents an application that has been submitted and received by our program. As you can see, there are some orange areas and then the outlying black areas of other counties that have been, that have blue dots that have received applications. These have been determined to be ineligible because they are outside of our service area and we have referred them to the appropriate grantee for assistance. As you can see, the distribution of these applications is, is very widespread throughout the county, including the barrier islands, and we're very pleased with this, with the spread of applications received. The bar graph on the right is the breakdown of the applications received by municipalities and at the bottom is the unincorporated areas of Pinellas County that have received over 850 applications, followed by the City of Clearwater. Our vast number of applications that we've received thus far would not be possible without our ongoing and continued outreach efforts in the community. Our communications team has partnered with us very well in social media, in flyers and maintaining our website to be transparent to the community and what we're doing. And we could not do this without them. In addition to those elements, we also have a series of in-person outreach events that we've been attending. There are local pop-up events that have been occurring in November and December throughout the county where community, where community members have an opportunity to meet one-on-one with a case manager, discuss their situation and see if an application is the right fit for them. In addition to these pop-up locations, we have also attended community events at our local mobile home community parks for those that have been substantially damaged and need a little extra support in completing their applications. We've also been attending special events in the community to get the word out, including most recently the Sanding Ovations event in Treasure Island. And then on Saturday, we will also be doing the Mary Beach Holiday Market in Madeira Beach, so come out and see us. Our outreach efforts will continue into the new year because we do need at least four times, we're projecting, we need at least four times the number of applications that we've received thus far to expend this funding for People First. Outside of our individual engagements with the community and citizens, we've also started engaging with our lenders, brokers, real estate agents and housing counseling agencies for our homebuyer assistance programs. This week, we have four homebuyer assistance program workshops for these providers. The most recent was on Tuesday and then today at 10:00 AM started the next round. We sent this information out to over 80,000 community providers that provide these services in the area and had an overwhelming interest. Within 24 hours, every seat that was available for these events was filled, so we're very excited about that. The interest has continued, so we will be implementing additional workshops in the new year for these homebuyer assistance programs to get the word out, as well as an online option available to view for those that couldn't make it in person. And with that, I will turn it over to Ryan, who will tell you about more program-specific information.
Good morning Chair and Commissioners. Great to be with you all again. So as we had spoken about previously, BDO is going to be conducting a procurement for general contractors. This is a very important part of our overall recovery effort in order to get those hammers swinging. So we are pleased to report that we did publish the RFP for general contractors last Friday, December 5th. We will, we received very few questions as of when the Q&amp;A closed on December 9th, which leads to be a good indicator that the RFP was solid, pretty understandable to the respondents and so on. We are then going to move into scoring and selection of those general contractors between January 12th and January 30th. We will be moving into then contracts with the selected general contractors towards the end of January, early February, and then we anticipate hammer swinging by the end of February. So we're moving very, very quickly. We're very happy with how things have been going so far and we're looking forward to a good competition there and some scoring along with that to get good GCs in the door. I want to, we're also, this is, this is it, this is all we have for you today, but I wanted to end on some good news. Matt stole a little bit of my thunder, but we, we do have some good news here for you. We committed to getting funding, some funding at least out the door before Christmas and we are on track to do so. We have currently three homebuyer assistance closings that are currently slated for next week. So we're very excited about getting folks into their new homes. We're providing up to $80,000 to fill in those gaps in order to make those homes accessible to them. And so we are looking forward to those, that big milestone next week. In addition, we're working through our, about five disaster relief payments before, before Christmas and the new year that we're, that we're hoping will go out again by then. We're just finalizing some of the details around that, making sure that everything is extremely tight. We know that this program is one that is, it's both accessible, low barrier to entry, but that also means that could come with it some potential, you know, nefarious action, if you will, which we're going to, we're going to do everything in our power to avoid and we are going to avoid. So we've been working through that programmatically as well. So we are on track. We're looking forward to getting these, these sort of milestone events done by the new year and then in the new year, you're going to see a big ramp up of providing assistance, assistance going out the door, people getting helped all across the county. So with that, I will open it up for any Q&amp;A you might have for us.
Any questions? Commissioner Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when I'm looking at the first slide, the second, well, you know, the cover slide, so the first slide, and it shows 495 individuals who were not eligible and it has inactive status detail. I'm pretty sure that includes the 336 that live in St. Pete that applied that didn't qualify.
Yes, that is correct.
Which by the way, I tried to make sure I was doing public service announcements saying, and St. Pete's stuff is releasing this week, so hopefully they will move over there. So my question is, do you, and not specifics, but do you have perhaps an example you could give of what you're running into maybe where the majority of people who do live in the areas that this program is supposed to support, why they're not qualifying? Or is it something more that maybe we could do on a communication piece up front to make sure that they fall in line and would qualify? I'm not saying it's a waste of their time or anything, you know, or your staff, but maybe we, we could do a better job at trying to get out, here are some examples of what you want to make sure you're doing to.
We appreciate that, that offer of assistance, Commissioner Flowers. And it's, it is very helpful to get the word out and help get good applications in and folks who we know will get through. You know, we see a number of reasons for being determined to be ineligible. A lot of those have to do with income. They're over income. It could be in many instances, we have applications that came in from other areas, you know, Hillsborough, Pasco, they just didn't, they didn't quite understand that this was limited to Pinellas County. And so, you know, we're messaging all of that. We can get you a breakdown of the ineligible, of all the ineligible reasons and then we can maybe talk through some ideas about how we could potentially get the messaging out. But I will just say historically, and we've run programs like this for about 20 years, the fallout rate for these programs is roughly 60 to 70%, which is why we mentioned that we need to get about four times as many applications in the door in order for us to be able to serve the amount of folks that we have committed to serving. And so it's not uncommon. It's usually not due to the inability to provide documentation. We work very closely with folks. It tends to be things related to income and so on.
Okay. And then my other question was, for the three individuals who will be closing, so that is good news for them, I am sure, a wonderful news. Do you have an approximate dollar amount of what those three, I know it's up to 80,000 to cover, do you have an approximate dollar amount that those three would?
It is the full $80,000.
Okay, cool beans. 240,000. Okay, and for the ones that you see that on your chart, you have about 62 applications that were withdrawn, was that withdrawn by the applicant because perhaps they figured it out? Were they exhausted from the process?
I don't, it's typically not exhaustion from the process. It's they get in and they realize that this is not the right program for them and they self-withdraw. They, you know, self-select themselves out. Again, do we, do we get? Again, do we get reasons for the withdrawals, or is it just a, okay? Okay. And if you'd like some more information on the specific reasons for withdrawal, we can provide that.
And then my last thing would be, and you're probably doing this, but hopefully for the ones who are over income, since we talked about after we get through this, we will look at what revenue we have remaining that may be able to assist, because 70% has to go towards low to moderate income. I hope we're really getting that word out. You know, they may make some other arrangements or whatever while waiting, but for those who may still want or need the support, just to let them know you're not right now, but your right now is coming, hopefully, if there are any dollars remaining to help.
I appreciate that, and yes, we'll make sure we're getting that message out. We don't want to overcommit, but we want to make sure that, you know, we're messaging to the extent that you want us to message.
Commissioner Peters, I can't see you on the screen. Do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you, I'm just taking notes.
Okay. Just had a couple, 3,000 applications you've looked at. You said you need a lot more. Based on where we are, based on your experience, are you comfortable that we'll get there? Or is the unique nature of the county make it difficult to get where we need to be?
So what we, this, it's not uncommon to see a large influx. I think that the influx of early applications is greater than what we typically see. What happens with these programs is we start out with, there's a lot of buzz around it, folks get prepared, the date comes, and they go and apply. And that's just, that's kind of common, right? Once the buzz dies down a bit, we have to do more. We've been working very closely with county communications. We have been doing a lot of outreach events. What we see actually being the best marketing for these programs is word of mouth. So if you look through all the reasons where the, everybody who applies will say, how did you learn about the program? By and large, it is word of mouth. I heard from a friend, I heard from a neighbor, heard from a family member. And then next is actually Facebook, so, you know, that's working with comms, making sure we're getting the message out, social media. But we also have other tricks up our sleeve, if you will. We have populations, we have information from people that we can start reaching out to directly. Once we hit that point where we feel like we need to ramp back up, and we're pretty much getting there. So I anticipate that we're going to see an uptick in applications. Might be a little tougher on the holiday, around Christmas in particular, but in the new year, and especially when we start swinging hammers and people see houses getting built, they realize this is real money. This is a real thing, this is a real program, and then we see a lot more people come in the door. So that, to answer your question, we're very comfortable with where we are right now. And if, in the end, we find that we are not going to get subscribed, and then we always have the opportunity to move funds around, work with you all to figure out where's the funding best allocated.
That was one thing we talked about early on, moving those funds around to match the demand.
Correct.
And anytime you can do a one-page, like, summary on what's out there, so that, I mean, I know we've done this, but again, keep feeding that to us, because, you know, we just run into people too, and sometimes it's helpful to have it right at our fingertips and not have to dig back through a whole bunch of stuff. So that would be great. And then, so one of the areas of concern we all have is about our mobile home communities. Primary homes versus secondary homes, I don't know if we have that breakdown in terms of, but how are we doing with those folks and being able to find a pathway to continued living, if you will, in our communities? I know that it is difficult. I mean, staff went out with me to one community, six people, and it seemed like when we were, it's hands-on, and it's, you know, difficult work, but three of them, it seemed like there was a pathway to reversing things, and that's not your, I know that's not what you, but then the other three, there was some challenges with. So again, this is right down in the trenches stuff, so your thoughts on that?
I'm going to bring Danny Permar, our program director, to talk through some of the details.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. One of the things we have been doing with the outreach events that we've been conducting is actually working directly with the building department and going to some of those Mhu parks directly, those Mhu after-the-fact permitting events that are taking place. And what we see there is engaging with those individuals to get them signed up into our program if they qualify. So we're asking them directly, are you owners? Are you here as a primary resident or a snowbird to try to get those primary residents into the program? We work through the building department to get that data after those permits have been released and completed to actually get them into our homeowner reimbursement program, or if they're on the substantial damage list, get them into our HRP program. What we have also started as of two weeks ago is our first round of damage inspections in the program as well. So we've gone out and started for eligible applications, actually completing the damages inspections, and that includes some of the mobile home parks here in the community.
Okay. Yeah, obviously, that's, and we ran into the same thing when we were out there talking. There was some that had, you know, they just want to get their place back in order. So they went ahead and did things, and of course, they did things a lot cheaper than what FEMA says they have to charge for that determination of 50%, which just absolutely baffles me. If it's less money, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
But anyway, so those are areas that we need to be looking at, that after-the-fact stuff, that there might be opportunities to help folks out.
Yeah, and every week, as they go out, we go out with them, we conduct those, you know, interviews with applicants, and we're getting applications right there on the spot. We're following up with them, getting spreadsheets after-the-fact permitting of everything they've done, so.
You're not afraid of hard, you're not afraid of hard work?
No, keeping up with them, yeah.
It's not easy. It's tedious, and I understand that, but, you know, our residents really need our help. So thank you for the work you're doing. Building Department, thank you for the work you're doing, too. I mean, you guys are doing great stuff, so.
I was also going to mention, just as a reminder, that we do have, and this is for the population, that for whatever reason, we can't necessarily serve them by replacing their mobile home or fixing, preparing their mobile home. We do have the strategic relocation program or revitalization program that we'll be talking about early next year and figuring out how to fit that into this. We're gathering as much information as we can to understand what is it that we can do, where are the limitations of our program, and what can we do that's outside the limitations of HRP with that bucket of funding as well. So it's something that we've been thinking about, we're planning for, and that will be implemented.
And I know that originally, all this had to be done within, like, last June, and then we extended it to this June, so an extra year that folks could stay. I'm looking at Barry and I'm looking at Kevin. And then, has that been, was that extended six months? I can't remember.
The occupancy waiver?
I'm just really talking about their ability to stay in their home. I know it was supposed to be last year, we extended it a year. Do we now have, is it beyond that?
Come up to the mic. So you're talking about temporary occupancy?
Yeah.
Yeah, so your temporary occupancy permit.
Good morning. Kevin McKeandrew, Director, BD RS. As part of a larger update that I'll provide this coming Tuesday, one of those measures is extending compliance with substantial damage from June 1st, 2026, through the balance of 2026, December 31st.
Okay, that's what I, I remember something about that, because to your point about your program, a little more time might be needed to affect that, so that's great. Appreciate that. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Nowicki.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Spore and Horn. Just a few quick things. Great point about, you know, mentioning, like, when hammers get swinging, you'll get, see an uptick in applications. Do you have, like, canvassers that will go and, like, go through a neighborhood when a project is being done to say, hey, we're doing, you know, X, Y, and Z's neighbor one street over, have you applied to, you know, Pinellas Recovery? So you guys have canvassers for neighborhood?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things we do once construction starts is actually put the signs up in the yard as well, being constructed by Pinellas Recovery's People First. We use, you know, tap into the general contractors too, hey, these neighbors started talking to us, can you reach out to them? Our construction managers, we will have those on staff that visit sites on a day-to-day basis, on a weekly basis, so they can go and canvas at certain area and certain park of like, hey, you may qualify for this program as well. One of the things we didn't talk about for outreach as well is starting up a text campaign and mailer campaign as well. So knowing where the LMI population are, some of the applications we've seen already come in, try to target, you know, sending out mailers and text campaign for those certain areas, especially if they showed up on the substantial damage list, the FEMA damage inspection from IA report as well.
Perfect. And then lastly, for the homebuyer workshops, I first saw about it on Facebook, and so, you know, I'm a Realtor, and so, but I didn't get anything to my county email about the workshop or the program. And so I actually got, you know, an email to my personal email about it as a Realtor, encouraging me to, but I didn't get any government communications about the workshop. So maybe that would be something to look into for forward or more workshops in the future, you know, but that was.
Yeah. So there's the 2:00 event, if you want to attend.
Well, yeah, no, I don't need to attend, but just, you know, because one of the categories was like through elected officials in government, and that seems to be where a lot of people are hearing about the programs. And so, you know, I didn't even get, you know, a government email saying, hey, you know, if you know of a Realtor or a lender, send this workshop to them. We never, I never at least got that from the government side, but I got it from the private sector Realtor side sending it to me, but not to my government email.
Yeah, we might have more specifics on who we targeted, but I believe we targeted 80,000 individuals that were either Realtors or brokers, and that's why you received it on the private side. And then we targeted, I believe, staff at some of the municipalities, not elected leaders. So we can do a better job of communicating that with elected leaders, but it is geared towards Realtors and brokers and housing agencies.
Yeah, but I think the point's a good one. There's only 23 cities that are affected and a county that's affected, so you, a limited number of, you know, elected officials that can be clued in. I mean, it doesn't take them.
We hear you. When we're sending out information, send it to our Commissioners also. We got it.
Yep, understood.
Anything else? Okay, thank you all. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Okay. It is quarter to 12. We have our agenda briefing. Do we want to just go forward, trudge through, and good to go? Okay, we're going to trudge through.
Okay, Commissioners. So you got lots of different reports, et cetera, and stuff. The first substantive item, item number 10, is ranking of firms for destination analyst future partners for the CBB. This is a 72-month contract for $5.5 million. This is all their predictive visitation patterns and all their data analytics that they use for their program. Receipt and file, item 12, award of bid to Global Montello Group, Pinoleum Traders Corporation, so several different areas or groups through the Tampa Bay Purchasing Cooperative. This is for all of our fuel-type programs, $6.2 million. Item 13, is award of bid to Southern Road and Bridge for the federal open channel damage repair work. So this is post-disaster emergency repair work. Total cost is about $11.4 million, and you can see the breakdown of how those funds are, come together from various different sources in county government. Item 14, is award of bid to Earth Balance Corporation for our dune planting services, a little over $2 million.
Quick question. Is that one we've done before, like, in the past? Is this?
The dunes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Separate contract from when we do the dunes, yeah.
Okay, because I know Keep Pinellas Beautiful, you know, they do dune restoration. I've planted sea oats with Keep Pinellas Beautiful, so I don't know what percentage of dune restoration, the nonprofit that we heavily subsidize, they do, but I don't know if there's any more color or context to that.
Barry, it's required as part of our permit with the Corps for the project that we conclude with the dune plant.
I think the biggest thing is this is specifically to our beach nourishment program.
That is correct. Yeah, for our, the nourishment we're finishing now, but we always have had to do this as part of our contracts for beach nourishment. We do cooperate, though, with the nonprofits. Usually that's a supplemental project, including one that was completed in the last couple of years down on St. Pete Beach.
I was there, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Item 15 is ranking of firms. This is for the McMullen Booth Bridge northbound off-ramp over Lake Tarpon Canal. This is all part of the McMullen Booth project, I mean, sorry, Eastlake project, but this is for the design firm for a little over $2 million. Item 16 is ranking of firms, SE Pro Corporation for Joe's Creek Stream Restoration. This is part of their phosphorus mitigation, real-time rate injection and monitoring system. So this is a water quality initiative. It's 100% grant reimbursed by the state of Florida, and the project's a little over Item 17, amendments to agreements with several different groups for our bridge and structural professional engineering consulting services. So this is an extension of those services, $1 million for each agreement, so total contract increase of $5 million. Item 18, first amendment to purchase authorization with the Stitchu Form Technologies. This is for rehabilitation in our sanitary sewers. So this is a piggyback contract with CDA Daytona Beach, a little over $2 million. Item 19, first amendment, purchase authorization with Vortex Services for pipe bursting videoing and assessment. So first amendment increases the expenditure cap by $600,000 for a revised contract of Item 20, is award of bid for engineering inspection and restoration, oh, to engineering inspections and restoration services LLC and SAC for flood barriers for our utilities 21 is an award of bid to Kempen Ninga for the construction of the water. This is for the Keller Water Tran 60-inch valve insertion, so they don't currently have a shutdown capability in case of emergency, so this fixes that problem, $2.7 million. Item 22, we're asking that this be removed. So there was a new change to Florida statutes before we, or I guess it came about after this, so the department didn't include the language in the agreements that requested by legal. So we need to pull this and bring it back at the next agenda. Item 23 is a maintenance agreement and statement of assurance with, for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program with the state of Florida Emergency Management for the replacement of eight emergency backup generators to pump stations. So grant awards 2.3, county match, a little over $580,000.
Did you have a question, Commissioner? Oh, okay.
Okay. I look up every now and then, let me know. All right, regular agenda, ranking of firms for Finfroc Enterprises. This is for the design build parking garage for the airport that you just got the presentation on. Item 26, amendment to the agreement with HR Greed, Joe Payne, and Weldon Engineering for building and development review on call services for the department. So we're extending those contracts for 24 months, and the increases are listed, 1.2 million for each except for Weldon.
Sorry, just to go back to the, Chair, if I may, just to go back to the airport garage for a second, are we still shuttling people from the garage to the terminal with that garage being built?
Yes, you'll still have a shuttle, it just will be a quick shuttle around the corner. He talked about that, it'll take it down to a four-minute shuttle.
And, I don't know, maybe this is the wrong place for this discussion. I don't know, it just seems like, you know, if there's another phase in the future of building a garage, like, right across from the terminal, you know, spending $60 million, I know there's other components to it, but from like a user, you know, parking in a garage and then going into a four-minute shuttle still, you know, can you're in a rush to get to the airport, you know, four minutes, you know, five minutes makes a big difference. I don't know, it just doesn't seem, you know...
Well, one thing's for sure, they'll still be able to walk from that garage.
Yeah.
I mean, just like they can from long-term parking now. They'll still be, because it is, instead of doing it across the road, it is kind of at the end of the terminal, so there is that opportunity. it is kind of at the end of the terminal. So there is that opportunity. You need to provide the shuttle because there's some people that.
At a TPA, there's no shuttle from the garage.
Say that again?
At Tampa, there's no shuttle from, you know, it's a long term.
I think they do have.
Not the parking garage.
I, I, what do you mean? I use the economy. I'm cheap. So I take a shuttle bus, I take a tram.
They have that rail system from the big parking.
Correct.
Oh, I just park right next to the airport. I don't know where y'all park.
We're not proposing a tram, okay?
We're not, no tram?
No tram.
Anyway, there is that opportunity. But you can walk it. You'll be able to. But you also have that option for folks that need it. So, anything else?
Item 27 is resolution relating to extending the waiving of the double permit fees. I think Kevin talked to you about that. So waiving, we're extending the waiving of the double permit fees up to June 30, 2026 to accommodate people that are still trying to get the word out so they can come into compliance. Item 28 is the sale of surplus land at McMullen Booth at this drive. It's a small piece of property for $16,000.
Quick, oh, yeah. Kevin, after the, could you make a brief comment on the, how, how, how you feel we're doing on an after-the-fact permitting process? How are we doing with that? Are we getting people coming in? Do we need to, to get that message out more? It's obviously an area of concern. They should be concerned. They have an opportunity to, to write something. I know it's a, just your, your gut feeling. Your gut feeling on, yeah.
I'll have much more specific data to share on Tuesday, but there still is a flow of activity with regard to after-the-fact permit. But the biggest update that I can provide now today is that on December 1, we sent out letters specific to after-the-fact permitting, 2,250 letters for homeowners that likely sustained damage and did not pursue any kind of permit.
Thank you.
The piece though I want to add though that ties into the prior presentation is that with the People First Program is that there's a, there's a huge benefit to pursue a permit that's spelled out in the letter where these homeowners that come in may in fact be eligible, up to $50,000 in reimbursement fees. But without getting that permit, they would not be eligible. So there's, there's, there's a lot of pieces here that are all interconnected that we're trying to, trying to orchestrate.
Yeah, a whole bunch of good reasons to pursue that after-the-fact permitting. Thank you for doing that extra reach out as well. That was great. Thank you. Go ahead. Anybody else? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Flowers.
Not to mention, if they ever try to resell their home and the work that they did was not permitted, they're going to have a problem with that. So you're right on, on target. For item number 28, I don't have an issue with the sale of the property. We're getting a few pennies for it. But did they say what they wanted to, why they wanted to acquire? It's not even a half of like.
We're trying, we're trying to, we're trying to get rid of all these slivers of properties. And so we have a whole list of properties that are unusable for us and they're non-buildable. And so you go to the adjacent property owners and, and get rid of them.
Yeah, I remember when we had that conversation, talking about how we could, we're not using them. So, you know, for the revenue, and one of the things I shared at that time was not saying that this one would fit that bill, but anytime we have those slivers and we have people who want to build affordable, whether it's townhome units or efficiencies or whatever, I love for us to really look at that. That's why I was asking if you knew what their need was, why they wanted that extra little slipper.
Well, this is such, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, 0.006 is a small slipper.
We do look and if it, if it's a, if it's a buildable lot and we don't have a use for it, most of the, most of the ones we have is like future stormwater or future, you know, something. But where we don't, we want to get rid of those and get those back on the tax rolls. And we will look and to see if they are buildable lots and they could be marketed or sold to one of our partner agencies to be able to use for affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Item 29 is capital funding agreement with Clearwater Marine Aquarium for the renovations to the aquarium. Is approved by, in your capital program for $6 million for TDC. Item 30 is revisions to the fiscal year 2026 Elite Event Funding Recommendations from the Tourism Development Council. They're listed within your packet. Item 31 is a resolution adopting the 2025 Pinellas County Conference of Emergency Management Plan in response to the state and federal criteria. Item 32 is purchasing authorization for heavy and light-duty vehicles through cooperative purchasing contracts. Almost $8 million. Item 33 is a funding agreement with Suncoast Centers for the Sexual Assault Victims Examination Program. This has come up during our budget program, so it increases the staff hourly rate from $3.50 to $33. And we're funding a significant piece of this, but it allows this program to continue and consider it a vital program. Item 34 is an agreement with Gordian Group for our job over contracting consulting services. So this is what we do, we use under a catalog, pre-bid stuff to do lots of small type jobs. So this is an extension of that for $2.5 million over a 60-month period. 35 is a Third Amendment to an agreement with Smith Industries for Smith Fence. So this is fencing gate operators, handrails, $1 million. Item 36 is a resolution dedicating a portion of county-owned West Closterman Preserve as public right-of-way. So this aligns with the purchase of, of that property, putting it into Mariners Point Management Area and dedicating the right-of-way to create a seamless right-of-way in that area. Item 37 is Resilient Florida Grant Agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for Joe's Creek Restoration Greenways. So this grant funding is for the design construction of Joe's Creek Restoration Trails Project within the Lomond area and Kenneth City area. The agreement requires a 50% match, so grant funds in the amount of $27.9 million with a local match of the same. Significant project. Item 38 is a First Amendment to an agreement with Mead and Hunt for construction administration and inspection services for mobile home communities, federal-funded project number three. Item 39, I think the reason Jeff's been here all day, is amendment to the purchase authorization for inside public sector for technology products for various needs for BTS. We got one more too for him. And for this one, it's a little more important. Ranking of firms in agreement with Guide House. This is for the Workday Enterprise. This is for our ERP system. This is the software implementation, $5.6 million. That's what we're moving to. So this significant, this will be a significant improvement for all of Pinellas County. Item 41 is countywide map annual update. 42 is application for excess stop loss for United Healthcare Insurance. So this, this is our, our normal stop loss for any expenditures of an individual over $650,000. Item 43 is change order number one with Cigna. This is for our dental benefits. Increases our amount to align with our claims. 44 is change order number one, same thing. This is for Express Scripts for our prescription drug program.
Under 45, there is a proposed settlement. I, I see that the memorandum has made its way around and this is a confidential settlement and currently not anticipating any reports.
I will have a county administrators' report and the majority of that will be Kevin talking about a storm update. Item 48 are appointments to the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. 49 are appointments and reappointments to Emergency Medical Services Medical Control Board. 50 is appointments to Feather Sound by Commissioners Eggers, Flowers, Letvala, Nowicki, Peters, and Scott. 51 is appointments to Historic Preservation Board by Commissioner Eggers. 52 are appointments to Historic Preservation Board by the committee, by the commissioners as a whole, approved two appointments. 53 is appointments to Lomond Community Redevelopment Area Board as a whole. 54 are for the Pinellas Historical Commission by Commissioner Scott. 55 are appointments to Unified Personnel Board. 56 is the Value Adjustment Board. 57 is Commissioners New Business.
And we'll, and we'll just, we'll have those two, we'll talk, I have an LPA appointment that I'll be bringing. We'll be saying thank you to Commissioner Chair Scott. And what was the other one? Approval of? Well, yeah, the committees, the committee assignments. So that'll be coming in that point as well. So.
Okay, on to public hearings. Item 58 is a countywide map amendment from retail services to public semi-public, .78 acres. This parcel's bounced around in Dunedin and Clearwater and unincorporated areas. The proposed use would support install use for a parking area for a new freestanding emergency room. Both recommended unanimously. Item 59 is a map amendment from retail services to residential low, medium, .53 acres. It's, it's actually a resident, a residential unit inside of Golden Acres Mobile Home Park. It's completely surrounded by that. It does not increase the overall number of residential units. So it actually represents a decrease in the allowable density. Item 60 is the first public hearing for amendment to the Land Development Code. There's several different pieces part of this, but a lot of it is cleanup as a result of changes to statutory changes regarding the expedited permit process preliminary plat. And let's see, and then requirements around modifying the two-step process that we have. So. Item 61 is first public hearing for Land Development Chapter 138 zoning changes. This is all around our tree permitting process that I think staff's briefed you on. You guys have provided guidance previously on that. So it provides more flexibility within those areas. And get Kevin up to give a presentation. Item 62, this is changing just the zoning change for the Twin Cities Mobile Home Park community. So it's just the zoning change. It doesn't increase the number of allowable units, still stays at 64, but they wanted to move forward with the zoning. Item 63, this is a resolution supplementing the fiscal year 2026 budget. There's several different changes within this. You can read through those. $9.5 million general fund to the Sheriff's Office. These are projects basically that are carryover, carry-forward request of projects that didn't get done in the previous year. 3.4 is realigning reserves from state of Florida projects to the Federal Highway Administration for Emergency Relief Programs on our Capital Projects Fund. $2 million from realigning American Rescue Plan Funds to the Human Services Software Modernization Project. $250,000 for the TDC Toy Town remediation that we talked about previously. And then this appropriates it to the unrecognized revenue from that. 64, item 64 is, this resolution amends the West Bay CRA for City of Largo. This really addresses, there's several changes here, but it really addresses increase in the density, kind of envisioning what Largo is hoping to achieve within the CRA.
Not the geographic size.
Not the geographic size or, or modifying the term. They'll have a presentation for you at the meeting.
So the, the new densities that they're providing obviously make the property more valuable. Or is that? Does that affect the, the initial value of the CRA as it relates to TIF dollars or?
Great question. I don't know the answer to it. I was hoping you wouldn't ask me questions because I don't know that much about it.
Okay, well, hopefully somebody's listening so they can remind me to ask that question on Tuesday.
I'm sure they're listening. But I, and I did talk to the city manager about it. So I think they'll, City of Largo will be here also. And item 65 is enhancements to the retail pet stores oversight modifications and reporting requirements as directed previously by the commission. So we worked on that, met with both animal rights groups, also with pet store owners, and we're bringing forward a set of modifications for that. That's the agenda.
All right. Sounds like a quick meeting. Or not. Any other comments or questions before we adjourn? Commissioner Peters, anything else?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay. And as Commissioner Flowers prayed, we, our prayers are with you as well, Commissioner Peters, you and, you and your husband.
So, so we'll set lunch out. You can take something to go. You know, it's, it's very, very difficult to predict whether or not we're going to be till two o'clock or whether we're going to be out before noon. So, you know, you have to have lunch here. So we've.
We have to anticipate.
Err on the side of going late. And so anyway, we'll set lunch out. Feel free to take.
Yeah, so we have to anticipate Commissioner Nowicki's long question. I'm kidding you, teasing. You never know though, from meeting to meeting.
Very, very hard.
Okay, well, we'll have some food over there. All right.
All right, thank you.
And we're adjourned.